In no video.
Yeah, alright.
Okay, but I'm trying to get that to stop.
Welcome everybody out to our Western Weaver County Planning Commission work session for March fourth. It is roughly five P M. We initially had two items on our agenda night for the two items on our agenda for the work session. The second item on the work session has been taken off. Although we do have and welcome to our meeting Geneva from Black Pine. And Director Grover, I think we wanted to discuss our meetings for April.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so I'd like to get your input on meetings in April. And we didn't have one on the first, just because the first was the Tuesday. And we have not, we just don't have a lot with Ogden Valley as far as work sessions goes. So we're wondering if you guys would entertain another work session in April. But what we're thinking with that, because we got the planning conference. And we're wondering what your thoughts would be if we had a work session on the fifteenth. And then our regular meeting would be on the twenty second, which is a little different. And then the Ogden Valley Planning Commission would be on the twenty ninth, that's already scheduled on the twenty ninth. But we wanted to give your take on that, to see if that works in your schedules, if we did the fifteenth for a work session, if you're available. And then on the twenty second do just a regular meeting.
So instead of the eighth, we do the fifteenth and the twenty seventh.
Yeah.
I think that works for me. I better make sure I check it with the master calendar. But I think that's okay.
Let me call home.
She wants you out of the house as much as possible.
Well, she's good though.
This stuff so much, I'll be here.
Man, that's the eight, right? It'd be the fifteenth or the twenty second.
Oh.
No eighth, so we wouldn't do a first or the eighth. We would do the third and fourth Tuesday in April. And then we do have five Tuesdays and the twenty ninth, like I mentioned, is scheduled for the Ogden Valley Planning Commission. But we do take care of you guys on the fifteenth and the twenty second. So my biggest question is.
I think I'm good. Is this for all good reason?
Yeah, it should be fine with you.
So I got three and possibly a maybe.
Well.
I'm, I'm pretty sure.
Casey's good, Sarah's good, I'm good, Wayne's good.
Okay, alright.
The fifteen, and which one would be the work session, which one would be the?
The fifteenth would be the work session and the twenty second would be the, the regular meeting.
Perfect.
Sorry to do that, but we just have a lot of different items coming in the next little bit, so. You know, the twenty second, so. Excuse me. Kind of quit smoking behind the barns. Let's see, the twenty, twentieth is Easter, so. And so I don't know if I have to leave town or anything, but the twenty second would be a couple of days after. So, bold line accordingly then. We. Charlie's working on a few things with getting the development agreement printed off. And what we're planning on doing with the development agreements, because we have a lot of different development agreements coming up. But we want to maintain that consistency for you guys, because we know that your time is valuable. And so, as you know, we've kind of created more of a boilerplate DA. So it makes it easier for you guys to review, because state code requires that you guys look at the DA. But really, in the development agreement, we want you to just kind of focus on the, the, kind of the principles of what you'd like to see in that. Yes.
I, I, you know, the development agreement we've seen had stuff in there like electric plugs for automobiles in the garage. And a few things like that, and I think we should leave all that stuff to the U B C. And let, you know, let the code for that stuff not dominate what we're going to require of the developer.
We're totally fine doing that. We're probably the biggest thing we're concerned about is just making sure that we have the right language. And there, there's things that I think there is a little bit of. I wouldn't say nitpicky, but you know, some detailed stuff that maybe we should just leave out in there. Should be in the development agreement. But we would like to get some uniformity, because we just have so many development agreements. And there's really no way with your guys' time that you're going to have the ability to go in and look at all these development agreements. And so we're trying to be fair to the applicant, but we're trying to be fair to you guys as well. And, and I know that some of our developers would like to have, you know, a crafted development agreement specific for their project. But it's really hard to do that with your guys' times and to be respectful on that. And so those are some things that we're working out. And Charlie has the development agreement printing out for tonight's board session. So you guys can kind of dial in on that and talk about that. But we'd really like to have just a place that we put in the specific, you know, what additional density they're getting. Or, you know, things that they're doing above and beyond and have that in just a certain area. So you guys know, we're going to go into this area, but you know, everything else stays consistent. So that just.
More the contractual language is really consistent, and then we're just worried about the asks and the gives and the, you know, kind of the, the bullet points. And if there was kind of just a bullet point paper that were given, and then we just trust that that's what's in the document.
Yeah, and that's what we want to get down to is that in the staff report, we just identified those specific items. That, you know, we're putting in there, but then you actually have the DA looking at sort of being state code requirements. They looked at it, but at the same time, it just allows, makes it easier for you guys. And that's our, our biggest concern, because you know, we're, we add meetings like we're doing right now. We're adding another work session next month, where typically you don't have that. And we know your time's valuable, and the last thing you guys want to be doing is, you know, staying up late at night reviewing the development agreement. Well, I mean, it does probably you sleep on your side.
Well, or it has the opposite of that. Or the other.
Get you home, why?
And, and I know, you know, just to make a comment on what Greg Grover said, I mean, I got maybe seventy percent of the way through. I got through both of them. But going back and making notes for questions, I got probably about sixty-five, seventy percent of the way through it. And ended up with two pages worth of questions, comments and notes. And. I mean, we have a planning commission that I think is very willing to do whatever it takes. But I'm glad to hear that we're going to take some of the information that's not really within our wheelhouse out. And let the experts, wherever they may be, helping the county, take care of that. And make sure that all of that stuff's lined up and that our, our place is with some great land use and everything that goes with that.
And, and we will try to look, you know, make sure we go through the development agreement. Because sometimes there are certain things that developer, you know, would like to put in there. And so we'll, we'll look at that and if there's anything that, you know, sticks out or, we'll, we'll let you know if there's something on through to what we.
Well, you can always do an addendum on that too.
What was that?
You know, we're doing addendum on that too.
Yeah, we could, and but.
A generic, more generic the better. They need some fine tuning to do with it again.
Okay.
And then, tell Andrew, you're the one that's questioned.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, no, I think, I think that we've gotten through that part with what Charlie's going to present to us tonight. And, and so I think we're, I think we're beyond what, what we needed to do when Charlie put the email out and said, you know, kind of hold up on that. It, it was, that was, that was good, so.
And so just to clarify, you're going to try and make the format county specific instead of developer specific? Because right now we're getting a lot of, and not to say it's favoring one or the other, it's just the format is what the developers are giving us. And it's making it difficult to keep it consistent throughout the county. Right. And if we have a form that they can plug in their usual process into, it'll make it a little bit easier from the county's perspective.
And it really makes it more difficult for staff too, because as you know, we're limited on staff right now. And to, you know, meet the developers timelines and everything that they would like to have. You just really can't do that. And so, you know, that's why we're trying to, you know, be respectful of the developer, but at the same time be respectful of you guys. Especially with staff time, and so it's a little bit like that. As you do this, and you know, typically, you know, with development agreements, they go more back and forth. It's like the developer says, well, I'd like to do this, and then staff's like, well, no, this is what we need to do. We have all those back and forth, all those back and forth take months and months. I mean, it's not like we, you know, if, if we want to do back and forth, then, you know, we, we need to, you know, give the expectation of developers that. Development agreements can take a year or so to get through, you know, and so that's kind of, you know, we're trying to be accommodating to them. But still, you know, risk.
And the more standards we are, I think.
Yeah, and it may not be always exactly what they want, but you know, I think the biggest thing is getting the density and, you know. Our picture, you know, different things like.
Keep them both under. With the both, yeah. Got to keep one more for weird.
Anyway.
It should be different.
And then Charlie, we're going to plan on the fifteenth for the work session in April and then the twenty second. I think that was the dates.
Who doesn't?
Rick.
For Western Weaver.
And Liam.
Okay, you're ready to dive in? Okay, did you? Rick, did you mention at all that Taylor Landing was approved by the? Just so you guys know, something got done. No, 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 that was last, last week. Last week or the week before, I think it was last week. Yeah, as, as Andrew knows, with our conversations over the weekend, it's been, it's been pretty busy. Doing a lot for a lot of people, but nothing is getting done. So maybe we just pick one and let's go with it, which hopefully we can get that done tonight. With that said, we've got Cameron and Jeff here from our friends over at Westbridge Meadows. And under normal circumstances, the way that we used to run the processes, we would get the community plan in front of you guys in a hearing. And we would get, go through the community plan and together create conditions that we want to see formalized in the development agreement. That's the point that we're at right now. So even though we've got these different development agreements that might be out there circulating, and they're big and they're hard to get through, and they've got a lot of legalese in them. It doesn't really matter, if, those don't matter, so I don't want anyone to feel like we're not at the point that we are at right now, where we're ready to move forward and put this on a hearing. We'll go through some of the points of the development agreement, so in your staff report next week, I'll, I'll have kind of a distilled version of some of these concepts. This version of the development agreement, we've, we've got some fairly loose language in a couple of slots, but I just want to hit the, the points with the guys and make sure we're getting the right information. Put into the development agreement. Sarah, just as you said, this, this version of the development agreement is, is very much in favor of the county. And the reason why I think it's the best thing to do is because for most of the rezones we're working on, we're getting significant increase in density. And that significant increase in density, we're hoping at the end run, does not equal a increase in demand and resources from the county. It's disproportionate demand and resources. One of the big challenges of what we do in trying to implement the general plan is. If we were just to go and try and adopt a bunch of rules, a bunch of laws that say this is how we want things done, point of the general plan, that's it. We're going to get in trouble with the courts, with the, with the developers and all, because we're asking for more out of our developers through our general plan. Then we could get if we were just, if they were already zoned to the zone. So if they have the zone, they come in, they say, I meet your, your standards, except for this standard that is not roughly proportionate and essentially related to my project. And you can't apply it, then we can't, I mean, they could say that and we could say, yes, we will, and then wait for the judge to tell us otherwise, but then we're paying attorney's fees and we don't want to do that. So from my understanding of, of how the, the world works in, in this scenario, the only way to get to where we want to be in our general plan. Is to do it through legislative action, negotiated development agreements and, and rezones. And there's a lot that we can do, and there's a lot that this does. For example, one of the paragraphs in here says something to the extent of. If we, the county are agreeing to this agreement under today's premises, under what we know today. And the federal government or the state government changes the rules or a judge changes the rules on what we can actually do and not do. For example, there's a rule that was changed not too long ago that said, if this isn't a development agreement, it's no longer valid. We do have a paragraph that says, if anything like that happens, we want to protect our interest in the reason why we gave that rezone. And so the, the document automatically terminates, the rezone terminates. And everything goes back to how it was, with the exception of anything that is out there and lawfully applied for and entitled that point to stay. But it's just a really big stick, and that big stick is our ability to work with the developer, because the next paragraph, the next part of that paragraph says, however. If the developer says, okay, I won't, I won't let those things apply to me. I, I agree to just, let's just stick with what's here and what was in place at the time. Then we can move on and we, and we will move on, that's what the document says that we will do. So, for example, we, we've always got these little challenges every year. Where right after legislative session, we've got to run and go change all of our codes, because everything that we thought we could do can't be done anymore, or not everything, but some things. One of which we just caught the other day, had changed in the, one of the last two legislative sessions. And I thought, man, had I known, had we known that that was going to be invalidated through our code, our code was going to be invalidated, we would have addressed that differently through our development. So, and that doesn't mean that one size fits all, I kind of, I like doing it through the development agreement, because we can make them unique to each development, to each developer. Because we're not here to make developers' lives hard, right? We're, we're just here to make sure that the county and the taxpayers of the county, their lives don't get hurt. In fact, they get better.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Just to make sure that I heard it right, with everybody here already. So we have something in here that says that if something changes, we can stop. But we also have something in here that says, if we want to go forward with what we have in place, we can proceed as long as all the parties agree.
Yeah, if, if an outside force is forcing us to do something different than what we thought we were doing when we adopted this, what we knew was written down and what the code said. Then we will continue to move on as long as the developer tells us in writing, they're good with what we have here. And whatever extra new right or restriction or whatever that would inhibit our ability, they're, they're comfortable waving that. Fortunately, we don't have any crazy rules that, you know, do crazy things. I think if we had some crazy rules right now, the legislature did feel like they had to undo, you know, we, we might want to relook at that. But we feel like we're doing things pretty reasonably. It's. The benefit of what we're doing is when, when our development partners come to the table, they come with very little, if they own the land at all, they come with very little. And we do know that one acre lots sell, but they don't, you can't over saturate Western River with one acre lots. We know we don't want one acre lots, but we also know that we've got over leveraged. And so we have the ability to put together some pretty great arrangements that benefit the developer significantly, as you'll, as you'll read in here, benefit the developer significantly. And as I, I mentioned to Jeff the other day, their, their ask and our give, assuming the agreement gets approved by the commission and you guys. Is for thirteen thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dwelling units and one point two million square feet of retail space, that's their ask. And additional asks above and beyond that, that potentially cause harm to the county. Even if the county's pulling a ton of retail tax, we just, we're not going to see that benefit for a while. So we're seeing a detriment, we want to make sure we've got some protection to make sure that doesn't happen. Normally, what you'll see in a development agreement where a developer comes to the table with leverage already, they already have development rights. Normally, what you'll see is a document that says things like, we are going to make sure counting that you don't mess with our development rights. They're, they're going to stay here and you're not going to make new rules and you're going to allow us to do X, Y and Z, which inhibits the county's flexibility, I think, through a legislative process. And when they come with leverage, that's important, I think, if I were a developer, I'd do the same thing. So we've got a lot of opportunity, but also that comes with a lot of responsibility, just to make sure we're being fair and equitable in, in what our decision making is. With that said, that's not a preamble to what we're about to talk about, that is a preamble to the reason why we did the template development agreement. And it just so happened, after going through the development agreements that these guys submitted, we talked, actually, we talked to, a few months ago, you guys were working on the development agreement. I actually feel really bad because they spent a lot of money on the one that they worked on. And my thought process was, this is a big project and other big projects that I've worked on. For example, the snow basin development agreement, five thousand acres of, of, of stuff. Came with some pretty unique circumstances and some pretty new, great new ideas that were fun to kind of work through. And I wanted, wanted to give a lot of opportunity for that in, in, in viewing the development agreement there and then comparing it, or, or excuse me, the development agreement that, that these guys submitted. And comparing it to what we just drafted from our template. It looked like the template was just going to plug in really nicely with this project. The only challenge is the project is a lot bigger than the templates really designed for. But that's what the delete key and copy paste and reinsert and whatever key is for. So this is by no means a done document, we've got a lot of opportunity, a lot of flexibility. When you see it in your staff report next week, it still won't be a done document, still a lot of opportunity and flexibility. So whatever your recommendation of the county commission is, we'll just make sure we get those bullet point items ready. So that we can turn to Liam and say, legalese these and send them over to Jeff and Cameron's attorney, so that they can legalese and they're going to make sure it's fair. And maybe things that come back, maybe they're not as fair as I thought they would be, and then they negotiate that with the commission. And if the commission says, oh, we're going to make an adjustment there, if it's a really big adjustment, like Rick said, we're going to make sure you guys know what that is. In some cases, we tell the commissioners, hey, planning commission didn't see it that way, do you want the planning commission to look at this again? And in some cases, you guys. Other cases, I say, that's a big adjustment, let's go ask the planning commission in a work session, just to see, see what the gut reaction is. And if they say, well, we want to see this again, bring it back, and you guys saw that with one of the last ones we were working on.
And, and the only time, I mean, I shouldn't say the only time, but a time that I would want to see it again at the planning commission is anything that, that the planning commission is directly hands on about, changes. There's any changes there, then I, I think that it's a, not just courtesy, I think it, it should come back to the planning mission. I don't know how the commission will feel about that, but that's how I, because if, that's one thing that we know kind of specifically about.
Yeah. And so. I would agree with you, and I think Rick and I, when we address those kinds of issues with the county commission, supposing we recognize that it is a conflict. Sometimes things don't, you know, we don't remember how the conversation with the planning mission, but for the most part, as long as we know what's happening, we'll make sure the commissioners know, hey, this is different. Planning commission looked at, how do you want to proceed? And then the boss, he tells us what to do, usually it's go, go back and talk to the planning commission. Okay. All right, so I'm just going to do some, some page flipping with you guys. I've got some stuff highlighted, just. And we'll go through those higher points, if you guys see anything or catch anything as we're running through. Or remember anything that we talked about when we were working through the template, creating the template, let me know, we can, we can start. Hopefully we can fly through this fairly quickly, I do think we've got a lot covered though, so I don't know if we're done, Homer, unless you guys tell me. We're going. Okay. Recitals, recitals, recitals. Okay, page six. Talk a little bit about this in our last work session. The term, the term that was being requested, and Jeff and Cameron, if you guys have anything to add, please feel free. The term that was requested was thirty years plus two automatic renewals, or was it forty years?
It was thirty plus.
Thirty plus two, and I think I'm okay with one up to ten. The county has the ability with the developer to go in and add as much length of time at the end of that as, as we want. The benefit to the developer of having the, the potential of doing two, as long as there is no default. That's not being cured, is, that makes it a fifty year agreement and the financiers look at that a little bit differently.
And, and maybe just to add to that, so that number is not just an arbitrary number, that, that's a number that we derived out of a market study that we commissioned. A, a company, an outside company to take a look at market conditions and then make some projections. And, and so that number of. And, and, and we'll be okay with this term of thirty plus one, but looking at market conditions and projecting and forecasting. The absorption looks like it's going to be a four year project. We were, we love market studies, but we also know they're very, very aggressive. And so we felt like it would be better to, to do two extension terms, just because, you know. Is it really going to be forty, is it going to be forty-five? But, you know, I think for the sake of where we're at today, you know, like I said, this is, this number is informed by that market study. I think we're good with it, if we get to forty years, I think about that.
It's going to be next generation for most of us.
I make that, that'd be really cool, but you know, that's something that can be drawn thirty years down the road.
That's a, that's a future astral problem.
There you go.
But don't you think that in forty years, you're going to be close enough to build out, but the county's not going to want to get out from under?
That's what I'm saying, I'm saying, you know, they, they, whoever that is, us, county, yeah, whatever, whatever it turns into. Look at it in forty years, so that's our way of saying, we're, we're good with this, we just want to, you know, just, we put some science behind that number, right?
Yeah, the reason we wanted two extensions too, is there's a lot of engineering that pioneers this site. And so even if we sign the development agreement this year, it's going to take us a couple of years to get sewer system commissioned with the state, a bridge commissioned and planned across the river. Those kind of things, and so there are some master plan improvements that we'll probably end up using at least one of those extensions, just with the, the time it takes to get out of that.
I'll bet you sixty.
It's a bet.
What are we betting?
Yeah.
What your kids get? What if, without spending too much more time on this, what if we, planning commission, we talked a little bit with these guys about hanging that on market study? Worst thing is if we go into a recession and it takes another ten years to turn things around, I mean, the market isn't generally looking for that for twenty years out. And if it happens, all of a sudden that expiration date comes a lot faster than you get to bill now. So how, how would you guys feel about that? Or do you want to say, hmm, let's just stick where we are, we want to have the ability to come back and say? Or do you wanna say, hmm, let's just stick where we are. We wanna have the ability to come back and say, hey, this turned out to be the worst thing we ever did in life. We don't want this.
You know, if this was agreeable, I like, I like, let's just, my opinion is we just go with what we have here.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. Other questions, comments, thoughts?
Well, this is this one um ten year, if that was.
One ten year instead of two, yeah.
And we're okay with that because we will not be negotiating that.
So let's flip over invested rights. That's on page ten. So, uh, five point one, this is where we were showing what zones, um, they're being rezoned to. I added a zone in. Um, outside of what they were asking for, I added the O one zone. Um, more so so that we can make sure our notices are correct and showing what zones are there. Uh, then to have the conversation also with you guys about whether or not we should be looking at some of these park areas as going into. An O one zone versus just having them be um, uh, just about any other sign. Um, benefit is, uh, you know, you know for sure that that's a one in the long run detrimental, you lose. Lose the flexibility on maybe making some changes without more legislative action.
Given that this is gonna go through generations.
Yes. That will will work on that. One of the things that I talked to uh Jeff and Cameron about is. Um, when it comes to each of these polygons, looking at your, your master plan. I gave these because there's two different versions of the master plan, one with um eighteen hundred and one with sixteen hundred. And if you don't have the two different versions, just let me look, because I got lost when I was hanging them out.
I've got twenty five fifty. Got sixteen hundred. Was there a third one or am I missing something on one of these maps?
Are are your maps the exact same?
No, well, wait a minute. No, they're not.
Eighteen hundred and it's not twenty five fifty.
So one of them. One of them that has a, an S curve, you'll see the S curve, that's the sixteen hundred. Uh, curving into eighteen hundred, or the other one was just eighteen hundred straight curved. And you're right, you do see twenty five fifty on on the other one, but that, yeah, that's not, it's just because they scaled out. Um, as you look at these, these colored polygons, these colors stand for a zone and you can see the zone on. The in the legend. If we. Adopt a, an agreement and a reason that has legal descriptions of exactly what those zones are before they even know what their surveying is. Things get a little weird. It's how our zoning maps used to be and all of a sudden we have all these zones, these lots that are cut by zones. Um, and so I'm thinking we might wanna add a little bit of language here that says, hey, these are the legal descriptions, but within. Forty or fifty feet, a hundred feet, whatever that number should be, uh, will will allow you to make adjustments. Those adjustments don't change the amount of density that they're entitled to. It's still the thirteen thousand one hundred and ninety nine, that that's the number that gets approved. Um, so I just wanted to make sure I fleshed that that out with you guys. We haven't actually dealt with that kind of situation before and so I.
Yeah, I think that's an important thing to put next.
There's actually a little bit of language, so you and I, we can talk about that. Uh, but there is a little bit of language actually in the community plan about.
Flexibility?
Yeah, about that flexibility and and it actually um. Addresses, you know, the uh. Possibility of density transfer in 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 this type of situation, right? The flexibility of. This is a concept plan and as we move forward with. You know, firm legal descriptions of if there's conflicts, how do we deal with that? So we actually do have some language in the. Community plan. So we we should look at that and say we wanna pull some of that in.
That's perfect.
Okay.
Or just reference it.
And Jeff, you're you're saying that that's from your original, the original draft.
It's from the latest.
It's in the community plan.
Um, the the thick one.
The thick with all the.
The other reason we should separate these a little bit so that we're not. You have the community plan that has all the, all the pictures and.
Oh, there was, there was a copy of it.
I, I think I had it somewhere.
And if we want, anytime we wanna reference the community plan, if you want me to put it up on screen, you can do that. But, but there is, there is, we've put some body that is on.
Okay, uh, here are the meat and potatoes for our applicants, page twelve. Page ten twelve, uh, line eight point one point one or heard of eight point one point one and eight point one point two. Guys, okay with those zeros? I still don't know whether or not the commission is. Uh, I don't know that they're not though. Um, I know two years ago when the numbers first came up, uh, they said maybe ten percent of that. Um, but we've had a lot of conversations and these guys have done a lot of work and uh so. Uh, commissioners haven't come down to my office and said, stop talking about this. So, uh, I don't know if that means good, bad, but. We'll let them figure that out.
I think this number in eight point one one changed, right?
Well, I thought about just doing the original request, which was fourteen. Uh, I mean, at at some point in scale, it doesn't really matter, right? Um, I did have a question. I didn't ask you guys, what what drove that number? It was a very specific number.
It's just a combination of the zones, right?
Yep.
And the the area that's, I mean, it's just a calculation.
It was just when we took the county's zoning. And the zoning ordinance that was already in place for those different zones and then the amount of acreage associated with each zone. We did a table to find out what the max number would be if we could be maximally efficient.
Yeah.
And that, that isn't the total max number, but it's like a reasonable number with a waste factor.
Okay.
That showed for each zone, this would be the potential for that zone with street layouts and everything else on block design.
Okay.
So we did a couple of tables and they had. Uh, a maximum without considering street layouts and it was over sixteen thousand. And uh, you know, kind of a middle of the road that we thought this is probably achievable and then a low, if we had to. Uh, dedicate huge streets and other things, this is where that landed. And so that's what this number is based on. It's it's the aggregate of that table. That compiles all the zoning and what each zoning would allow for density on each acreage type. And then we had a lot of work in our engineering team to figure out, okay, well, a block design on that really yields this much. And so it's probably gonna land somewhere in there.
Let me ask you, um, how much of this number, uh, considered the the form based areas? We don't technically have a density assignment to that. Was that brief form based discussion or was that?
No, we, we allocated some to the form based in the mixed use areas.
Okay.
And so it only considers form based in the mixed use areas.
Okay.
Which we don't have a lot of. We ended up, because of the amount of commercial that we're proposing here. A lot of our form based areas end up commercial and not residential as far as apartments and condos. And that was also based on our market study where the market study came back and said. You know, this probably isn't an optimal area for apartments and condos.
Right.
Uh, townhomes are feasible here and uh some of those other uses and maybe in some of the commercial and civic use areas. There's some ground floor retail with, you know, condos above that could be feasible, but for the most part. We don't really consider that we're gonna be building a lot of apartments out here.
And even, and even just to add it on, even the. What we did apply to apartments and condos, which is a very, very low number, is also very low line, right? Not, not high rise, crazy high density stuff. It's so.
It's all conforming with the form base, you know, maximums and everything. So. Uh, we, we think it's a pretty achievable number. We think that it's probably, we're not gonna run up against it. Um, and we're not gonna be, you know, actually probably achieving the thirteen thousand by the time we get it all built. Um, because the market is also gonna temper that.
Yeah.
With what's reasonable and we're gonna start out there more on the west side. And then on the south, you know, with the bridge and everything, those are gonna be our two primary ar- areas to start. And they're probably gonna start off less dense. You know, and then we'll work our way into some core centers that maybe once we get some rooftop support. Those areas could become viable enough to support some of those higher densities. But there's a chance that it swings, you know, way lower than this as well, based on what the market conditions can support out here.
Okay.
And and for what it's worth, thi- this is good conversation. I think it's important to understand our, our thought process into it. The last thing we wanted to do is go push that number up. Because we're, we're looking at that number saying, we've got a lot of infrastructure to build. Um, which we're gonna talk about here shortly. And that infrastructure, you know, the last thing we wanna do is artificially blow that number up. Because that's just gonna hurt us in a huge way. And so we actually, if anything, approached it. Uh, to use Cameron's words, is we, we wanna be, we wanna achieve it. And so this is something that, you know, I would even say that we were. It's a balance, right? We wanna be conservative, but we wanna be realistic and aggressive. And so we, we put a lot of thought into. All of those things and so.
And there are a couple of things that we frankly don't control. We don't control whether or not UDOT really does um select this for the freeway, you know, and so. If they don't, our number probably just because of the market conditions swim drastically lower and some of our plan gets less dense automatically. But what we do wanna do is ensure that we create a, a good community center out here. So that the rest of Weber County can then kind of stay what it is, you know, agricultural in nature. And then we get a good town center out here that supports some of the industrial that's gonna come in the future plan. And so that's what we're really trying to do is it's less about the number and more about really the town center that we're trying to create. And if we can create that town center with enough rooftops to support grocery stores and shopping and. You know, people actually living and recreating out here, that's gonna be what we're trying to achieve more than, hey, we've gotta hit thirteen thousand. That's, that's not our goal at all. Our goal is to create a real town center that's viable. For the long term growth of the area of, you know, that we're trying to pioneer out here.
Okay. Any questions about that? Good. Good, uh, one point two million square feet of commercial space, eight point one point two. So just, just by way of comparison, a super Walmart is about a hundred thousand. So one point two million sounds like a lot, but you got ten Walmarts out of that.
Yep, and we think it's probably at full build out if we get a good sized road through there with UDOT. And we get enough traffic count, you know, there's probably five big box stores out here. With the supporting retail around it and that's what that number is kind of a derivative of. So. You know, we think that um, that's a pretty aggressive number too. But we're, we're teamed up with the right people to make that happen if we can get the traffic count and population to support it.
And and the traffic study, for what it's worth, the traffic study is. Uh, we did ask them to spend um a significant amount of time looking at that number, the commercial number. And what we learned, which I, you know, I, I'm actually kinda curious to hear your feedback from Livingston, but. The, the market study that came back said that, you know, Ogden. Proper is massively underserved as it relates to retail, commercial. And so that this would be a huge benefit to, you know, again, Ogden proper, right? Like just the entire metro area, there's a huge gap for uh, commercial services. Which I thought was interesting, um, and and just wanted to pass that along, but that, that was a huge. Uh, contributor to us picking, choosing, planning what we have from the, from the commercial perspective.
Actually interesting, cuz I think maybe every third or fourth person that I talk to, uh, inquiring about property out west, they're looking for commercial property. So, makes sense.
Very good.
And I pointed the plan and say, go to twelfth street or or talk to these guys. Uh, what can the, oh, sorry, just real quick, uh, uh, eight point one point three. So, one of the things that the form based zone requires is a street regulating plan. Um, and we're just not quite. Far enough along to know how those streets need to be laid out. Uh, now, street regulating plan can be laid out in a way that's pretty flexible. But the way the form based zone works is we try, still try to dial them in within plus or minus a couple hundred feet of where. Uh, they're shown on the plan, that's, that's about where they should be on the ground. Um, I think as things build out a little more. Uh, these guys are gonna understand a little more what trends are pushing towards and we just don't wanna adopt something that's not gonna uh work very well, have to be redone. That said, no retail until there is a street regulating plan. So. Uh, we are giving them the one point two million, um, yeah, on paper. And then agreeing that a street regulated plan that we will help facilitate the creation of that street like regulating plan. Whether it's adopted in the form based zone or just a private this property some other way, um, as long as it meets the standards that are listed here. Um, do the form based zone and have good street connectivity basically. Um, and I did put in there contain uh at least fifty acres a piece. We might wanna go a little over on that cuz it was. Looking at some of those numbers, but do you guys care what that number is? Or street regulations plan?
I tell you what, give us, give us, this is one of those situations where we wanna have our, our simple way, you know, how about we didn't.
Okay, so I only thought with the, that amount of acreage, fifty, forty, thirty, whatever the number is, it's enough acreage that you can actually get a meaningful. Um, uh, organization, organization of streets. It's still kind of small, but uh you can still get some decent streets laid out in that.
It ma- it makes sense. I, I think that will probably be fine, but let us, we'll, we'll check on it in a little chat.
Perfect.
So I don't wanna get ahead of it, but I, cuz I think it probably comes up. In a few pages, but on, on this, on a street regulating plan and and saying that it comes in before any commercial. How many, how many residential units do you figure you'd have to have before a grocery store would be necessary? Or or viable, I should say. Yeah, well, I mean. Basically, and the reason I say that is because on our field trip when we went down there, you know, uh, down to Utah County. I thought the, the last trip we took down with the commissioners was great because you guys were breaking ground on. Grocery store. So, so the way that I look at this, being that this is a certain amount of distance from a grocery store currently. That would be something that, that would be an economic selling point for residential units. So is it the egg or the chicken? You know, and so that's why I asked the question and I'm only asking that question because I think I wanna just put the thought in, in. Going forward in the process here, that those are the kind of things that probably need to be. Picked over a little bit and looked at a little bit because I think that that's important, you know, cuz because at the end of the day. What this plan tells me is you, you're gonna be able to walk to just about anything you need or want. Whether it's recreation or shopping or, you know, anything along those lines, maybe not all recreation, but a certain amount. So, the case becomes, you get people used to driving. Before you get something there that they can walk to, they may continue to drive.
Right.
You know, and so I thought that was great, what you guys were doing down there with putting that pad in, finally getting that pad fulfilled into a grocery store.
Yeah.
That was right there in the community. So anyway, that's, that's the only reason I brought that up.
Well, to give you, to, to color that, um. To color out there, to color that with a little bit of context, the grocery store in Vineyard is the first one in Vineyard. The grocery store that we're building currently, right? Uh, they have today approved about twelve thousand units without a grocery store. I would say that's probably overdue. Um, they've had to go back into Orem to do their shopping for. You know, twelve thousand units worth of growth in that city. Um, if you, if you asked us to put a number on it, we would probably peg that number somewhere in the seven to eight thousand. Is kind of the max out. We need to start getting some grocery and some retail out there. So people can get used to that and the, the patterns of people's lives can be adjusted. And so we're gonna target a pretty aggressive number there, like a five or six thousand unit. You know, once we get that many rooftops on the ground, we're gonna be courting and we're already courting some. Major um players for the commercial stuff to see if we can fast track that even. Uh, and like I said before, the market study supports that. But the market study also identifies some risks to having that happen in an expeditious manner. Some of those risks include the UDOT. Selection of corridors and everything else. And so I would say, you know, we're gonna try and target having a grocery store sooner than later. Because it's gonna be due for one already by the time we get out there. And, you know, i- if you go to forty seven hundred west, that place is hopping all day. You know, people are buying little things here and there because they don't wanna drive all the way into town. And so this project is probably gonna support one soon enough. It's just whether or not we can have enough rooftops to attract. A real commercial tenant.
And that was what I was gonna say, I would assume your goal is to get one there as fast as you can, but when you're working with a lot of national franchises. They have numbers that have to be met. They're gonna be looking. They have numbers that have to be met. They're gonna be looking at their demographics and they won't go there if it doesn't fit their.
Yeah, and it's a challenge too, because if you look at what we accomplished in uh, our Vineyard, the Vineyard City, Utah City Project. We, we went after, I mean, basically five years ago, we started trying to attract a commercial tenant that would be a grocer. So we've been trying for five years to attract a a grocer to come to that area. And we were not successful in landing a grocer. That grocery store that you guys see there is a product of us. We are backstopping the grocery store. We partnered with the Lee's Marketplace folks. Um, Abel Porter was gracious enough to listen to our crazy pitch, and we said, look, we think there's a demand here, but we're not grocers. You tell us what this looks like. He was intrigued, but he still made us guarantee that the site is successful for him. And so we are breaking ground on our own grocery store joint venture with a grocer to to pioneer that, and that's in a city. That has thirty thousand people already and a pent up demand. And so it is difficult to um, attract retail, but we kinda know what we're doing now, and we feel like we could probably get it done.
And you're further away at this location, like so Vineyard is closer to civilization.
There's more competition. Right, so so that actually scared some of the grocers away.
Yeah.
You know, and that was one of the challenges. It was close enough to other grocers that, you know, some of the people that looked at it. They're gonna look at this and say, wow, this is kind of a monopoly out here opportunity, so we think it'll go well.
What does backstop means when you're uh, in that context? Are you uh, paying wages if it's not coming to pass or what's happening there?
No, we have. Yeah, it's it, it is kind of um, semi confidential language, but basically it's. We're gonna make it happen. We're gonna make a grocery store happen. And we're gonna make it worth uh, the Lee's Mark Marketplace folks' time to make sure that it's a a good situation long term, so.
I will, again, going back to that market study, we we were very interested, intrigued in the gap part, right? And there's a clear gap where, you know, I would say geography is literally the gap, right, where. It is a long drive. There's no, the scarcity out there is is really our kind of a friend.
Yeah.
Yep.
Any other questions? Uh, Paige, we're still on thirteen.
Thirteen of eight hundred.
Thirteen, yeah, eight hundred, uh. Eight point two phasing. So, one of the biggest uh, challenges when you're dealing with phasing, at least in my experience, is when you're trying to lock down. Especially climbing, but even geography. Uh, and one thing when I worked with the developers, especially these really large developments is um. Flexibility is key, uh, being able to pivot is key. But also sometimes when you have too much flexibility, you get unintended consequences. So you need to kinda harness a little bit and really think through what that flexibility looks like, so. We just wanted to make sure that they had optimal um, flexibility to choose what their phases are. They, in the uh, community plan, they show where phases one and two are. Um, I don't think we have any text that says they have to have those polygons. In fact, uh, one of the things, oh. Uh, one of the things that we are gonna base that off of is traffic demand, or traffic studies, um, traffic. Basically, when we're looking, when we're looking at this, we're gonna look at phasing from, um, what does it look like uh, trying to give to the property? So when they're moving to phase three, they pass a certain uh, amount of trips per day, basically, coming into the project. Um, they can figure out, that configure that however they want to. If they wanna start working on commercial, uh, they can work on commercial. The only differences are, we've got some standards that run with that. You gotta. Bring your construction drawings in so that we know what you're doing, um, have your uh, streets and pathways laid out in a way that actually makes connections and. Uh, is logical, uh, will, as we look at things and we see roads going to nowhere, knowing that we need to do something about it and. You're, we don't, we know you don't have a plan for that phase for a while, we're probably gonna interrupt that. Um, uh, project improvements phasing, same thing, uh, and then public park open space phasing, this is one. Um, and development agreement, there's a lot about the parks in there, and uh, we are, only every uh, developer that we work with on parks and entries. Uh, so, uh, the reason for that is because parks, they just, they don't drive money. Uh, except for you get a little bit of boost in your property values with parks, if you have a really cool uh, development, but. Um, the cost and you're not selling them, you're usually donating that at that point, so, um, every. Project that I've worked on, I've always tried to make sure that those parts are at least proportionately put in as it's being um, platted. Or uh, front loaded, actually, I love it when it's front loaded. I know I've got a really dedicated developer when they. Give us as much open space as they possibly can on the front end. Um, okay, so that's in uh, eight point two point four. What we're asking for is with every. Plat, any subdivision plat required pu- uh, public park open space. Uh, shall be, shall contribute to one or more of the three large parts illustrated on the plan. So basically, when you bring in a plat. Fifty percent of the open space you're required to to bring. Um, needs to go contribute to one of these parts. The develop, the master developer gets to choose. Which one or how that's organized, all that kind of stuff, but we just wanna make sure as the plats are coming in, that's moving towards these areas now. Uh, master developer might come in and say, you know what, we're just, let's just do fifty percent of that part regardless of the four home subdivision we're putting in. Uh, and that's fine too, but just making sure, worst case scenario, especially, I'm always thinking through the. Hate to say it this way, I'm always thinking through the lens of the greediest developer that I've ever worked with, which is definitely not these guys, as you can tell, they're. They're paying the uh, grocery store employee wages and, um. Yeah, I look at it through the greatest uh, I, uh, developer's eyes that I've ever worked with, which is fine, what is the least case scenario? Um, which is a certain amount of acreage per house, and we do have that in there. Um, your plats need to. Plat a certain amount of acreage per lot or per front door of open space. Um, and in the beginning, fifty percent of that goes to the parks, the total part, the big parks are are actually created. Okay, any questions?
I thought you were gonna name the greediest developer, you you stopped.
That probably shouldn't. Okay, delegation, the uh, eight point two point five, this one is is a really important one for me. Uh, and I think a really important one for the county moving forward, and something that doesn't always get caught when we're working on development agreements. It's when you got a master plan, especially one as big as this, you're gonna have sub developers. I mean, you have to, you're not building all the houses yourself. Um, but the worst experience that we have in our office is when we're working with a sub developer who doesn't know what the master developer wants to do. Or doesn't like what the master developer wants to do and wants to change it, and they own their property and they didn't realize they bought into something that was more than what they realized they did. Um, this paragraph does two things. It makes sure that uh, there's a lot of pressure on these guys. To make sure their real estate contracts with those sub developers are tight. Because it still falls back, anything that their sub developer does uh, inappropriately, it'll it'll blow back on them. And so they gotta need to make sure it's tight. Now, I do have some stuff in there to try and give them some protection as well, as well as us, if we do have a really poor performing. Sub developer, but, um. Uh, when you look at all these other, uh, whether it's phasing or uh, anything else that uh. Any of the bit of infrastructure you're seeing here, when you're trying to get a bunch of people to come together and build a community. That is what we have, is we kinda see how it's playing out right now, right? We're not doing this twenty acres a time. Detriment we have is uh, if we get someone in there who doesn't realize that they're part of a, they're part of the greater good. Yeah, that's really what the issue is.
And and maybe just to add to that, that in our uh. Two were, that we took out of John County to see both of our developments, so, you know, that that's just something that we. You know, have learned, we we've learned pretty well how to navigate that space as a master developer with sub developers, both those communities. We, we individually, um, went vertical with, you know, maybe the majority of the product, but. A lot of the other product was the result of relationship with sub developers. So we learned how to navigate that space pretty well, and that's not to say that we did it super well. I'm saying we're doing it pretty well now because we've learned a lot, and so we. Applying mistakes made, and so we we do know how to manage that relationship.
You actually pointed that out to us down there.
Yeah, yeah, I was, yeah, I remember that. I appreciate you sharing that information.
Um, good example to think about, um, just so many different variety of ways things can go wrong, and that's the only reason why we put together. Every minute is one thing still wrong. Um, the Wolf Creek Resort, the valley is really good example, um. Planned in the eighties, nineteen eighties, uh, replanned a little bit in the two thousands and between two thousand and two thousand fourteen. It went bankrupt and uh, was cannibalized by everyone who owned these um, on the properties. Uh, and then all of a sudden, the, the various property owners that were, I can't remember, seven, eight or twelve of them, they all came to, came together with the exception of one. And said, we need to do something different, but we have this agreement that applies to all of our properties. How can we do that? Um, and the one who didn't come to the table ended up with none of the development rights. Um, that's just how that worked out, and so we don't wanna give you to that kind of a situation where we don't have a master developer who is tall in the shots. Um, if this does ever go south and it gets fragmented about amongst a bunch of other uh, uh, boats. We come back to this paragraph, and it says, you guys figure out who the master is, and then you come and tell us because they can't sign a master. Developer without us saying, we agree that they could do that work. Now, we can't re- unreasonably withhold that. Uh, we don't reasonably withhold that based off of core performance, based off of, it's it's in the document, based on core performance, based off of. Um, uh, financial uh, challenges, if they can't prove that they got the financial ability to fix the problem, we don't wanna delegate them as the master. Uh, we definitely don't want a master developer picking this up to only get a piece of it, and then letting the rest go uh, south, so. Uh, that kind of stuff is pretty important and it can fall by the wayside if you're not certain. Rick and I were talking to a, a developer. Uh, actually, I guess we were talking about a developer, uh, who came in, had his property in a, in another master plan project that has development agreement, and. My very first question was, uh, does the master developer know that somebody else picked up profit to keep their development and how are they controlling this cuz we're not? Don't make us say how many rights go with this property. That's just, uh, puts us in a bad spot. Fortunately, we. We talked to master developer, they they had it all in the real estate contract, so. Tree connectivity, um, this is an interesting one, the idea that that I had, and I don't know, um. Uh, how well you guys will receive it, but when we were talking about how do we stimulate getting people to walk? This is in the context of um, uh, our applicants asking for maybe a little bit longer block lengths. As our our street connectivity, even though we increased the length with our last change, we increased it from six sixty to eight hundred. Um, it's still a lot, and there's still uh, some challenges when you're getting into especially your larger lot sizes to make sure that. Um, you know, you get your streets in there, yeah, when you potentially put in, be put in the house in, but you have to put a street that. Um, plows through it, it could get to be a problem. So how would you guys feel if we just said? We already have a grid pattern, it's pretty big, uh, they're like thirteen hundred feet apart at least, um, but they're, uh. The grid is there. How would you feel if we said no minimum block length on the inside? You have to make blocks, but no minimum block length on the inside, but you've gotta have good uh, pathway connectivity.
So we just put regulations on the pathways, not on the streets necessarily, is that what you're asking?
Uh, and we already have the regulations of the pathway.
Right.
So.
And what?
I would be okay.
Pathways and mid blocks, or what are we talking about?
So our code says one pathway every four hundred feet, um, we may end up working up a a a different rule. I know the um, community plan. Um, I think the closest together that they have them in the commercial areas and the higher density areas is one every five hundred, which. I'll be okay with that too. Um, we're getting the benefit of a fourteen hundred acre master plan community. Um, the reason why we're putting one pathway every four hundred feet on a twenty acre rezon. It's cuz we don't know where that's gonna go, and we don't know what the guy next door is gonna do.
Hmm.
Um, and the best thing, the best problem that that community can have in the future is having too many, and then figuring out what to have to do with that. It's still gonna be a problem, but.
So you're, and I'm I'm sure this is something you've thought about more than once, and so your communities, you've had a little bit bigger block length and about. The five hundred feet is your max distance for walking paths, and that's functioned well.
Yep. And those are our most used amenities.
Yep.
If if you look at the amenities that we build in a master plan community, trails are the number one used amenity.
Mm-hmm.
If we could, the only other one that even comes close is skate parks, and not everybody wants a skate park.
Yeah.
But uh, trails are used by everybody all the time. And so we feel like that's a great way to, you know, encourage walkability and not only that, but uh, get everybody out of their cars for a change. And it might not work for every community. I think it works for ours because we're bounded by, we've got major drainage issues that we're gonna have to solve when we develop. And so a lot of those north to south roads that you see on our maps, those are there by necessity because that's where we're gonna have to drain things north to south. And then east to west, we're we're bound by the roads that the county needs, you know, for traffic flow in the future and master planned roads. And so, we're kind of crisscrossed with a lot of different necessary corridors already. Um, if you went to a different site that maybe had more natural drainage and and some of the different problems that developers sometimes run into. Something like this, a minimum block length or maximum block length standard, you might not wanna go away from, but in our case. We need to lay it out this way. It's not gonna work any other way.
I'm okay with the adjustment.
Okay, any other?
I don't think they do nothing that would ruin the beauty, so.
If we can convince mom to not load up the suburban with the kids to drive a couple half, couple houses over. They'd have, she'd have to go, yeah, ten blocks over to get to there, just walk through the, use the pathway between the uh, between the two uh. Uh, developments, but, okay, uh, the other part of that paragraph, uh, says that uh, any other. Thorough uh, throughway, a driveway, um, a passageway and alleyway, any of those things can count as a pathway. Which really is the, actually the intent of of what we have anyway, and we'll work with developers to do that.
As long as they're public access.
As long as it's open to the public and it's a through a throughway, um, the intention is to allow those to be pathways as well, but this is the first time we actually.
Like for like the rear entry homes, like that, yeah, that's true.
Yeah, it'd be weird to have a driveway that has a twelve foot wide driveway that has a twelve foot wide pathway next to it.
Yeah.
Um, actually, one of the, one of the coolest driveways slash pathways that I've been on is, um, kinda goes up into a a remote area, but. The community path has to use part of it, and the speed limit is marked at ten miles an hour, and. Uh, you're riding your bicycle and you could hear the tires creeping behind you, but the. They pay a lot of money to live down there cuz it's pretty exclusive, and the only way to get there is either by bicycle or uh, have a have a pass. So, uh, that was kind of a cool experience. Okay. Uh, highway parcels, had two highway parcels, we're down on streets, uh, still page fourteen.
This is a change since the last time you've seen it too. Um, we, through multiple talks with the uh, Jason. Ogden Bay Waterfowl Management Area. It became apparent that it would be very difficult to get uh, one of the future arterial streets that's shown on the county general plan through that area. And the more we dissected our traffic study and our information that we needed connectivity to the west as well. We realized that it it was the right thing to move that um, county master plan road byway up onto our properties, so we are. This is self inflicted.
Wait a minute.
I know Jeff is gonna kick me right now.
Yeah, because we all did see it. You were snowmobiling.
You guys already covered this, and I had a great time still.
I remember somebody saying, I hope he's cold.
Okay, cool.
One of the things when we were working with the the uh, wildlife folks is, I think we mentioned this to you guys already, but they wanted a six hundred foot buffer. Cuz they want someone to be able to shoot right at the border like they do right now.
Yeah.
Um, that turned out to be, I I would think it was like three hundred acres or something like that, if we gave that to them. Um, I told the wildlife folks that I'd try hard to to do three hundred, they said, well, we we don't wanna budge, we want it to be six hundred. Um, uh, the applicants came back with a hundred and thirty two, which is a a standard, it's a pretty wide uh, UDOT right of way. Um, and I'm trying to hedge them up to two hundred. Um, hopefully that that works for everyone. Uh, two hundred, a hundred thirty two feet wide is the narrowest that Bangor Highway gets. Um, and so if we're ever gonna do anything more than a Bangor Highway, they were, we're definitely gonna need more than one thirty two.
And this is for the industrial byway, right?
Yep, yes, for byway. So, the way this is intended to work, if it works, um, is uh, uh. With the, the way it's written is uh, with their phase two, uh, they will uh, dedicate or convey in some way that byway parcel. And we're just calling it a byway parcel. In fact, somewhere else in here, we call it the byway open space parcel. The intention is for it to be open space for a while. Uh, believe in opportunity. Uh, believe in opportunity for a byway. If the port takes off, we do really well out there. We got a lot of trucks going through here. We're gonna wanna have a way to get past all the houses without driving right down Main Street. Uh, otherwise, that road never materializes. It's a great little buffer and a great little open space area and people can shoot the other direction. Hey, uh, we're also asking within that open space area for a pathway. Um, and I'll get down to that uh in just a second. Actually, nevermind, I won't. I'll get down to it in just a second. Um, the other uh thing to look at is the the highway that we've been looking at, the West Weaver corridor. Um, we are asking for these to be dedicated and conveyed to the county uh at no cost to the county. So this is a, this is a big amount of uh. A area. I think this is a hundred and thirty something acres, uh, if I remember right. It's a lot of acres just. Going straight out of their pocket and into mine.
Those are still in line. What we have on the lab, long term transportation plan, though, for the last fifteen years or whatever, right?
Yeah, yeah, they are. If uh if these guys waited until you got built the highway, assuming you that actually chooses this, then you that comes to them and buys it. Uh, buys the right away. Um, we're we're hoping we can incentivize you that a little bit by saying you don't have to do right away corridor towards a agent. Especially after we put some commercial and some higher densities in here, that land's gonna go uh up very fast. And I would rather not have to pay for it unless I go out here. So maybe we can make that happen. Okay. Um, there's one other, um, and it's not a highway parcel. Am I getting ahead of myself? I'm getting ahead of myself. Okay, uh, so within both of these highway parcels, we are telling them that they can build roads. They're not obligated to build either highway. Um, that should be to be the the state or the county or or the port probably for some of it. Um, they're just obligated to the gift of the of the right of ways, what they're asking for. But they could build their own roads within those highways as long as they're.
The standards they need, not to the standards that's needed for other uses.
That's right. Yeah, as long as there's enough room, I'm asking for the road uh uh for the. West Weaver corridor to be to hug the eastern line or the western line as much as it can. Or if there's enough space in between, do both sides. So you got some good frontage roads. Um, which uh looks like what the plan is based on the community plan. And then same thing with the industrial byway. I'm asking any road that they install should be as spargable north on that as possible. So there's plenty of space south for it of. To do things. And ultimately, I mean, when it comes down to it, if you don't start plowing through things, they they know what to do with streets. And they know how to 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 redo them so that they turn into highways and um our goal is just to make sure that. Uh, things are saved and while they're saved and preserved, we don't wanna make them be useless uh for the applicant.
Work on that byway as soon as you can.
Got it. I'll make note. Thank you. And just so you know, this is related to the hundred foot buffer along the river too. That's.
Right.
One of the reasons we're asking for a hundred foot buffer is that we are probably. Giving a lot of right away that other developers wouldn't necessarily give. And so we think that those two. Kind of need to be discussed together. If we're giving a lot of roadway that benefits the county long term. And uh then we could get some relief along the river and the river is a minimum, right? Based on flood zones and everything else, we're probably gonna have to give more than the hundred foot buffer in some areas. And so we wanted to just kind of discuss those two together and make make sure everybody is aware that, even though we are. Very generously, you know, giving the byway area. That is a benefit to the county. We're also asking for a reduction in the. Weaver County uh river pathway area, so.
Wonderful disclosure there. One of the things with the um West Weaver corridor that we're asking for uh is to have it conveyed to the county a little earlier on. Um, I also have a little caveat in there that says if the county's not ready for anything that we want conveyed to us, that the developer can hang on to it and. We'll work on a different arrangement later, but if we've got the ability to incentivize you not to come in because they know it's county property and not. Uh, not the private property, um, that could stimulate their thought process a little bit more. So uh, trying to get that as early as we can. Improvements, okay, disposal highways. Okay, so. What happens if nothing happens? You know, what what happens if the highways don't go in? Well, the byway stays an open space parcel because it's counting towards their open space. The freeway, the highway, um, what we're saying is uh the county will get give a pack to them. If they don't exist, it's a it's an LLC. So if the LLC doesn't exist for whatever reason and there is no successor air to give it to, the county can surplus it at that point. Okay, um, eight point four point two point two eighteen hundred. Um, and sixteen hundred alternatives. So that's where you get two maps. You got the eighteen hundred and sixteen hundred alternative. Um, sixteen is what we have been talking a lot about. Um, and uh it's the primary alignment shown on the the general plan and only because where sixteen crosses that river. The what that's the only place the flood plan gets narrow. Uh, it's almost within the the river banks and so. Uh, if the engineering works out, if the property acquisition, everything works out better for eighteen hundred. And great, is what it is. It's gonna be a lot more expensive to put it right there at that bend. Um, probably it may even need to go. Um, around the bend and then cross. Uh, you'll we'll need to do some um bank stabilization if if it's right at the bend, but. They wanted to make sure it was clear. I know Brendan's very um insistent on having this be part of the plan in order to get it both. So.
I I prefer the eighteen hundred uh corridor myself. If the spacing's better.
It is better.
It just makes more sense. I know the rivers worse to work with there, but the spacing's better.
And the reality is these guys are gonna be working with that river to do a whole lot of anything, so.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I would say by the time we get to the decision making, we'll have enough data that, you know, we'll all be able to make the right choice.
Um, okay, so what we're saying in eight four, eight point four point two point two, excuse me. Is that uh while the developer is working on all this other stuff, they will with reasonable diligence. Get uh the landowners in the area together and come up with a preferred alignment. The actual alignment um uh is is gonna be based on what the landowner can or what the applicant can get. From the landowners. We don't want landowners to get in a spot where they could just get them over a barrel and charge way more money than the property's worth. I'm not gonna follow anyone for trying to get a little bit more than fair market, but it I don't think uh we should be incentivizing any of that to happen or. Or creating a situation where that can happen. So we'll let the applicant choose. It may be some combination of eighteen hundred and sixteen hundred, maybe a snakes through it, but. Uh, the objective being that the county gets to decide if it's a terrible alignment. Um, uh, but. Honestly, if nobody wants to sell and you gotta sneak things through, then get what you get, I guess. However. In the event that somebody doesn't wanna sell, they are jacking the price up. We do have a little statement in here, a little caveat that says that the county can at that point and 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 will. Try and um help the developer out or waive the requirement to have it. So if we've, if uh we waive the requirement to have it, um, you know, they're they'll have a bridge that goes to New York. And then hopefully everybody else around here figures out, but now that's their cost and they probably should have just. Uh, sold the land to the developer and let them, let us all build a road together.
What do you mean by the county helped them out?
Uh, well, it's. So, no, 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 with buying properties. So when you go into the 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 willing buyer, willing seller phase, it's still a fair market value, uh. Primarily fair market value. We we, I think we can go up a certain amount of over value to make someone feel good. Um, or to move a house or something, but um for the most part, we don't. We don't wanna create a really great plan and then have people say, huh, you can't do it unless you go through me uh on yourself. You know, that that would be. Disruptive.
And this is on property lines. This is not to the middle of anyone's property, right?
It could be if they find a willing seller.
But but the right, right, the the way it's drawn, it looks like it's going on property lines.
Yes, right.
You're not asking to divide it, take anyone's house or.
No, no.
It's just asking for.
It's it's right on the eighteen hundred section line.
It's actually their benefit to.
Yeah, I hope so.
It is. It's just a hard process to get them convinced of that, correct? It takes that money, Thomas.
And that's the other thing. We don't put a timeframe on this. The traffic study does talk about at what point eighteen hundred is gonna be needed, but if they don't have the right of zone. Uh, by then, we're obviously not gonna be able to require to have.
I agree.
Once they do get the right of way, um, if the county requires them to install the road, we are gonna give them a payback agreement so that everyone who. Is benefiting from that.
Yeah, the impact.
Pay into that.
Yeah, what was that? Say that again, Charlie, sorry.
Uh, if if this applicant is uh able to get the right of way all the way through. Um, and the county says, we we do want you to build that road. We're gonna get them a a a buyback agreement. Something like that to make sure everyone's, uh, it's for me and and uh it wasn't uh. I didn't mince any words when I was talking to to Jeff about this. I said, you guys are getting a lot out of this. We want you to give us a lot, but when I'm looking at. Very singular singular individual owners who stand to benefit, that that just doesn't make equitable sense to me. Although equity, I guess, is illegal anymore, so maybe we shouldn't.
I get it, Charlie.
Okay, moving on. That's usually what it says. You move right along. Um, railroad crossing eight point four point two point three. I didn't highlight that, but I should. Um, the plan right now is not showing, uh, there is a version that's in my email inbox, uh. Uh, it's not showing the seventy one hundred uh west crossing and it's not showing the sixty seven hundred west crossing. Um, I still let these guys know that I'm I'm gonna continue to apply pressure uh to have them change the plan to show it. We're not asking them to build a bridge. Nor are we asking them necessarily to put that infrastructure in. We're asking for a right of way. That will connect from the railroad to a collector street somewhere within their project. Um, and we're asking for enough land to be donated at the time that um. That area gets planted in subdivisions, enough land that it flares out so you get enough for your uh your ramp and get up and over.
Oh.
Um, it's tight uh over uh on that narrow neck by seventy one hundred. It is tight to get there, but. At ten percent grade, even if they have to get up forty-five feet over, um, that it's still possible to do and. They might have to kind of curve that that road to the salvage a little bit to make that happen, but. My guess is with the amount of fill, it's gonna be needing to move around in here. They'll probably be uh in a better situation there.
After we had a new map that did show something, didn't we at one time?
Yeah, if you can.
Do you allow share?
I can, and and as Charlie said, this came. We we tasked our civil with this and uh he went to work on it and was able to uh. Here we are. He got it done.
We're talking about. This and this extension. And so you'll see, based off of what you're looking at in front of you. You'll see these minor changes, but like Charlie said, just a little chicanery, lines up, lines up. And so those those two processes.
We're gonna do both or or just one of those?
We're asking just for the right of way to be set aside.
Oh, okay.
That's all we're asking for. Now we can work with them later.
Eventually.
Yeah, someone's gonna put it in the county impact fees. Maybe we work with them to do some payback agreements. Maybe. Uh, the port puts them in. Um, I'm I'm more uh. Inclined to try and make sure seventy one hundred goes in because it's there. There's a park right there. Um, my guess is is at some point in time, there's gonna be an elementary school on either the north side or the south side of the tracks. Um, and if the um school district doesn't have to make the tracks the dividing line because there's a safe way to get across. Um, I think that would be more ideal for the school district, so. Carving up space. If uh if it ever goes anywhere, then uh we we give it back.
So you'll see this version in the package for next Tuesday.
And Charlie really twisted our arm on this. We resisted it for a while because we think that our traffic study shows that. If the U dot corridor really does go through there, it's not a necessary uh crossing. But his argument that really swayed us is, look, if we do get a park over there and some school and other other uses that complement. They're not gonna wanna go all the way over to the freeway to cross. They're gonna wanna cross somewhere closer. And so.
Yeah, I'm thinking a lot about the the, when you're reading in the news, going down in downtown Salt Lake. Trying to figure out how do we get the west side of the freeway connected to the east side of the freeway. East side is booming, west side's struggling. Um, so uh, thank you guys for for looking at that. Okay. Railroad crossings.
Question, Charlie, we even want, on that West Weaver corridor.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a road across from that?
Uh, crossing the West Weaver corridor or going over the railroad?
Railroad.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
What's the number on that?
Uh, it's unnumbered right now.
But there is a road.
Yeah, future freeway road.
I can't see any reason why they wouldn't use it.
Well, and we're not asking these guys to build that bridge either. Um, we are allowing them to build the road within that freeway corridor. Hoping that when you dot comes in, um, everything's gonna be configured in a way where you that can ramp up, get over the rail. And back down to twelfth street on the other side. It's gonna be tight, but um, that's the hope. Um, there's also a another uh uh idea out here that. North of the tracks, there's a lot of opportunity between the tracks and nine hundred. Um, and we're gonna be redoing our corridor, uh, we're gonna be doing a new corridor part component to the general plan. Um, it's gonna be a really great opportunity for us to really think hard about how to make sure we get some. Good land uses on the north side that can then incentivize some good connections.
So right now, the potential bridges for the developer are both over the river. Yeah, that eighteen sixteen or and and over here on the connection to twenty five.
We're not gonna penalize them if they wanna do one of the other bridges uh to the north.
No, please. You can spend some more money.
No, sorry. If what I'm saying is in instead to get their second access, we won't penalize them if they're not on the river. But we will, once twelfth street reaches uh a level of service C, we just, we don't wanna put that much more impact on. Uh, the community out there. And looking at the traffic study, it looks like, especially if the court does anything, they're probably gonna be there. Uh, pretty quick. By the time these guys are had a bridge approved. Okay. Some of the stuff, I, it was just part of the template agreement. I think some of this is gonna be pulled out, uh, for example, walls and stuff like that. Reason why we put wall standards in there is because when you got this guy doing twenty acres and then the next guy doing twenty acres, we wanna make sure down that corridor, you got some consistency. Um, I don't know that we need to do that. These guys are gonna um. The market will benefit from some attractiveness and you guys saw that.
And our community plan addresses a lot of this too.
Right, yeah. So the the corridor went down that had uh the greens, uh, green edges and the fence and. Had a big pathway. I thought that was actually a really cool little corridor. Okay, um, at the trees, we're gonna adjust this to uh better suit what they're going for here.
What number are you on, Charlie?
Uh, I'm on page seventeen, eight point five twenty-six. Um, this is what's in our standard agreement and this is assuming that we're doing a twenty acre rezon. And we're not quite sure what the next guy's gonna do, so try and get as much as we can in there as we can with these guys doing a much bigger piece. Um, uh, let them figure out their trees. Uh, so I think.
And we and we do address that in the the community plan as well.
I just wanna put them in.
So you and Brendan both said that, yeah, but uh.
So.
Like Gotham City and you know.
I would suggest.
I mean, you can put the pack die in.
In one of our documents, we required like an arborist to be planting and certified arborist.
That's all been coming out.
Okay, good.
Yeah, page eighteen, that's all out, uh, the end of seventy-two. And so.
Okay.
There's there's no need. Um, and we are actually working with one developer who actually came up with a really great idea. Um, and that you could actually read about it in here, but it's not gonna be part of this project where they said, look, I just. I'm planting a tree three times before you give me my antico back. Um, and I'm planting it three times because the dump truck ran over it or the uh dog peed on it or, you know, it's just not getting through the system. Um, and the way that we're doing our escrow releases, we do incremental releases based off of complete systems being done. Uh, state code says we have to do allow incremental releases, and so that's how we chose to do it. And so. Twenty years down the road, you might actually get to that very last tree that needs to be installed and uh. So it just doesn't work as well that way, but. To be optimally protective of uh making sure everything gets in, unlike a a development that we saw.
Still talking about.
Still talking about, they'll be back again. Um. We we wanna make sure we front and give a lot of motivation for it. So the program that this developer came up with, um, he said. If it's gonna cost me as much as it does to hold a bond for as long as it does on these trees and to replace the ones that continuously die. Um, what if I just write you a check? Okay, so write the county a check and then what maybe we do is we have. Uh, an on-call or or a contracted arborist. And so we're not requiring the private market to pony that up at all. We work with our own people. In fact, we've got some people we've uh we've been talking to. Helping us readjust our expectation on on trees out west, mostly because of soils and water situations, we just didn't know what the science said, so we didn't know how to. We didn't wanna underdo, but. Now that we know a little bit more, we also don't wanna overdo, um. If we put a program like this together, give the developer the option. We're gonna hold your bond until your trees are in and surviving. Agreed through by a development agreement. Um or. You volunteer for this program, or it's we they could do some accommodation to, maybe half the subdivision, they do one thing, half the other thing. So and then what it does is they write a check, we have an arborist, they might write a little check for a little bit more, because it's gonna be at cost, the full cost of that arborist, not just for a sixteen year old to dig a hole, but a root ball in there. Um the arborist is gonna be in there making sure that it's actually survivable, but that's the reason, if we have a professional doing that, that's the reason why I think. We can say there's no warranty, there's no escrow, um whatever you would just. Give us in the beginning, then ask for it to come back, just write the check, um and then we'll go get the trees installed.
Instead of.
Sorry.
And instead of the developers going through trial and error a bunch of different times, we just have the county going through that trial and error, you guys have a big enough project that you're gonna be doing it and and you can. You'll you'll see what works somewhat, doesn't it, but the.
Ariel good on weekends.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, she loves those trees, but.
Gary kinda likes the idea that we're talking about, even though he doesn't love the trees still.
But the right tree, there is true that there there's a way to make it work, but it's gonna be trial and error and it's gonna be finding the right provider and the right arborist and everything, and so having the county do that.
But for this particular agreement, we're.
No. Next, you might you might see that coming down in one of the next agreements um that we're working on, so. Um. Okay. Off streets, uh offsite street improvements. Get through everything. Oh, public landscaping, we did have a full section in there, um uh just working with these guys and looking at the community plan, we're just. Only reason to talk about public landscaping and those rights of way other than trees, you know, uh what they're doing. Bushes or uh rocks or whatever it is, is because. If you're doing twenty acre at a time, it just looks bad. But these guys do a lot more than that, so we'll let them have full control over that, they're uh during a zero scape thing, they're agreeing to water wise. Um and they're agreeing to HOA uh management of that, so there's no reason why we should be involved in that.
And that's all face by face, yeah.
Uh next page eight point five point nine is uh offsite street improvements, um so. I haven't come up with uh our wishlist on seventy five hundred, but I have chatted with these guys, it's been a couple of months, so I hope you guys remember a little bit about it. Uh we know we're gonna need improvements on seventy five hundred.
You can start with your first bridge there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, you know, if we do a bridge there, maybe maybe we can.
You give some pumps in there, they'll.
Yeah.
Constantly running.
Get some of that dirt over here that you're gonna do flood control and move it over there and maybe do some good burns. Um anyway, so improvements on seventy one seventy five hundred, we just need to make sure it's safe, um the other thing is is. One of the reasons why it's good for them to be starting their connection over at the river. Is because that'll be the one that more people are gonna use. If we overburden seventy five hundred crossing uh to the point that this, I think we talked about this before, to the point to set that the the state says you have. Substantially, I think the word is substantially increase the traffic on there, well, give me a number, I can't, uh but I know when I see it, substantially.
Well, I for what it's worth, we so. Uh us along with our traffic engineer did have some conversations with the railroad about defining that. And and so with that clarification that they gave us, our traffic yeah impact study. Does actually. They they were able to back into a a unit count number, so so the traffic impact study actually does address. The seventy five hundred west specifically, and so. Anyway, uh we're saying we agree and and all of those improvements will be. You know, assessed by the traffic engineer on the road.
It's one of the things I like working with these guys, cuz I I say something that I'm like, don't beat me up, but I want this, and they go, we were already gonna do that. It's nice, um eighteen hundred south with reimbursement, twenty five fifty south with reimbursement, we talked about that, finer agreement. Um now, when I write that, I'm I'm probably not gonna say it shall be done, but that the county will work with them, and if we do make it happen. That we're definitely gonna pay him back on that. Uh but proportionate share street improvements, um one of the things with the traffic impact study, we asked them to look at the rights of way all the way back to nineteen hundred west. Um because some of those intersections are gonna get loaded, and so we just want to make sure we're. Paying attention to how much how much traffic is going into the site, so we can adjust what our counts are on each of those intersections and tell them what their what their program shares.
That's measured out over the duration of this.
Yeah.
Development.
Yep.
Yeah, again, with a bunch of forecasts, but but as you can see that last sentence, right? Traffic impact study. Updates will be pretty pretty regular, right, as we go through, and it's really gonna be. You know, dictated by, you know, any major improvements to these major roads, and then they'll.
Say substantial increase, whatever that means.
Yeah, exactly.
That'll be Gary's choice.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. Um second ingress, we we all know this is a big deal, um and they're working on it, that's that's really why the river bridge is a thing. Um one of the things to note is as they're looking at the second ingress, they're not requiring a full street upfront, but I think, and I think I I think and I think they think. That uh at least putting it somewhere close to where the road is gonna go anyway is gonna be a good idea, get some good compaction in there at the very least, and then as they build. Then they add asphalt on that too. That's. Non-public landscaping, water wise, this is the one where we we've got the, you know, pretty specific things in our other version, I deleted those out. Because these guys are gonna wanna do a lot of zero scape thing, sorry. Zero scape thing, it's with a nine, I don't know. Um so they wanna do a lot of zero scape thing and uh uh water wise kind of stuff, and I'm just. With the HOA taking care of that and with the fact that tiered secondary rates are gonna be a thing here pretty soon, um I think that'll take care of itself. Santeri sewer, uh eight point seven point two point one, we're saying we're not doing anything for sewer, so figure that out.
Yeah, we have to. Can't wait to solve that one. It all runs downhill, right?
Yeah, yeah. It's on top, yeah, you're at you're at the bottom of the hill. Okay. Some of this other stuff, you'll see reserve, we'll just delete that if if as we finish this out, stormwater and floodwater, this was one that I wasn't quite sure how to wrap our heads around it quite right. Um the black line is substantially what's already in our uh our draft agreement, we just wanted to make sure we added in a little bit of um. Floodwater as well, because our our standard draft agreement doesn't have anything about floodwater in there. Um this is gonna do the same thing uh as the. Is it a thing, uh do a study upfront, but anyway, the the front load, the study. On how that stormwater and the floodwater management. And facilities will be, so just a master plan, we're asking them to do something that'll be for the full site. Um you know, it'll we'll be asking for it after, you know, probably one of the first one or two phases are done, I don't think we need to have it. Immediately, but enough to make sure that uh once they get into those areas where the floodplain is a problem and where we know drainage is a problem, that. There have already addressed a. Global as in project wide. Um addressed it from a project wide scale, so it says that um. We'll work with it with them on it, we're not gonna unreasonably withhold it, but a stormwater plan isn't finished until Gary agrees to it. So uh and you can't unreasonably withhold it. Otherwise it gets.
Uh like make sure you make a relief on that really. What's that? Make sure you make a relief on that river somewhere on the other side of that horseshoe. Yeah, we 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 got you.
They've got several actually.
We've heard down there, we've heard that. Pedaling, so you heard it.
Okay, uh.
Since we can't use the one that's already in place, let's make one that we can use. Wait a minute, I mean, I think we decided that we're gonna make the relief to the east side.
Hold that plug. Uh project specific stormwater requirements, we're not gonna know what those are until the master plan comes in, so as soon as that comes in. Uh there are a few things they're gonna do, they're not gonna start any mass grading other than just grading for uh roads and lots. Um until that stormwater and floodplain master plan is done, uh and then Clor and Loma.
It's actually gonna be Lomar, it'll be Lomar F.
Lomar F, yeah, that you said.
Yeah, L O M R dash F, that'll be. The. That'll be what we use.
Okay. Perfect, so it says that the work with FEMA to get. Parts of the project they wanna build in and that are in the floodplain out of the floodplain. Uh so that's a uh Loma stands for letter of map amendment, and that's a federal process that is not a fast process. I don't know, maybe it will be with nobody working there.
So letter of map revision dash F F being filled, so that that's how we're solving this, because we have the high the the high watermark is set and established. So then we get to uh. And so Lomar F is by far the most efficient process. Um for us to follow and it'll uh. And 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 it's the right way to do this anyway, cuz it is all gonna be by fill, right, so we're not. We're not amending actually anything, we're revising. The map based on filter.
That's it. Uh Lomar.
No, Loma or Lomar?
Lomar, so L oh letter of map revision. So L O M R dash F.
Oh.
So we'll be revising the map based on fill. So in these situations where you have established high watermarks, you can you can fill your way out of it basically, so.
Good. That's how it is, gonna get displaced to Andrew's house.
Yes, there you go. He's gonna make it go east is there, yeah, you bet.
That's a good thing about that science is that takes every consideration. Um flood lane development, um we're asking that no development be within a flood hazard, that's really why they'll be doing the changes, so. Okay. Park dedication. A lot of stuff about park dedication, really what we're saying here is we're okay. With uh your public park, or we call it.
Or the the pub district air size parks, right?
Yeah. And uh public park open space.
Yeah, there you go.
Uh the public park open space. Uh that's the ten um acres to thousand or one acre per um. Thirty three homes, is that right? One acre for thirty three homes uh would be the standard we'd be looking at. Um we were previously asking for um thirty percent of that being improved, but that's when we had a three hundred foot buffer on the river and we didn't wanna. Have to go plant grass everywhere on that riverway, um but now we're looking at that and uh I. The standard we're asking of other developers is sixty percent improved, forty percent natural. Are you guys okay with that, or would you rather see a different number on there, and thank question to you guys, I mean, I know what your answer is really, but. What's the worst case scenario?
I. Help me understand the point of the natural. Are you guys thinking the same thing?
I'll make them lower than.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and the part of the reason that I think that is because. In this particular area. And on the other side of twelfth street. There's nothing that's indigenous there anymore.
Right.
It hasn't been for a hundred and fifty years.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So it's not uh not native.
Yeah.
Just natural, whatever that means. So. You guys tell me what you wanna do with that.
I jump ahead and talk about my section that might relate to this section.
Oh, yeah. Let's do it.
Okay. So we're gonna call this community amenities. Um I I did have a chance to meet with the. Our district to see, so I met with the superintendent, the. Chair and co-chair, I'm not sorry, the school board. Their um.
Yeah, don't think your parents wouldn't read that until you hear what she has to say.
Yeah, I know. I know, the. Oh. Administrator does build, what what the administrator, the funding, I I never get business administrator, that's the superintendent, so anyway. I wanted to get a feel for what kind of an impact this kind of size of a community would have on. Um school infrastructure. So for me, this question, I know there's different feelings about schools, I'm looking at this more as a tax impact and a community. Impact. Um as far as what we're, what the existing citizens are going to need to contribute before this is built out. Um. So yeah, I've got both enlisted here. Based on, oh, an easy way to think of this is. This development will have about forty thousand people. Uh is that what you guys are estimating around forty thousand people somewhere in that ballpark?
Fair.
That's the size of half of Ogden City. And Ogden City currently has two high schools and all of the feeders to those two high schools, so we're looking at. An entire school cone that would be necessary. For this development to occur. So um with that in mind. It for this development, the schools would need to build um. Six hundred and fifty five million dollars worth of schools to support their development.
Old school.
Yeah, I say homeschool, that's a solution, but we don't really have control over that at this point, infrastructure.
Sir, is the the total cost include the value of the property?
Yes, yes, that's the total impact estimated based on. Um the recent builds they've been doing, and their builds, I know they seem expensive, they're they're pretty much in line with what the state is doing for all of their schools. So um that that's a big number, and I don't think we can ask that of these people, like we'd like six hundred and fifty five million dollars, but the truth is, that is the impact we're asking of our taxpayers. Because the taxpayers that come in are going to be paying taxes for the improvements on these schools. Or other schools that are going up in the neighborhood. Like, cuz right now, everyone who is existing in Weber County is paying for all the new schools to go up, cuz there are no impact fees. For new schools, and we're feeling it pretty pretty tight, and we're getting a lot of citizens, I know it's the reason I'm on the planning commission is, I was like, why are we putting? More development in when we can't afford the school, the schools for these kids. And Weber County's taxes have skyrocketed, and a lot of that has to do with Weber County schools having no choice but to increase the taxes. Because they are asked to build more and more schools for development. So it's hard for me representing the um the county to say, sure, let's build all these homes. And telling our current tax base, and you're going to pay six hundred and fifty five million dollars to build all the schools for that community, that's that's a hard ask, so. Something else that we really struggle with is the school district is not involved in city planning, they're involved in building schools at. The cheapest rate they can, trying to make that money spread, and it causes a serious problem for us when we're trying to plan communities, cuz they're buying ag land. And then why put a school in the middle of ag land, and it doesn't have the infrastructure that's required around it. So if we plan. These lots into these communities. Then we can control that aspect of the of the community that, or I guess the disruption and advantageous part of the school in the community.
Which the general plan says we shouldn't publicly do.
Yeah, it so. Um. Well, I what I would request is just all of the sites for these schools be donated. If, so I I assume they didn't pay seventy thousand dollars an acre, but that's what ag land, from everyone I've been asking and kind of what the school is paying for. Ag land, they're paying about seventy thousand dollars an acre. It accounts, and let me run this number to make sure I got how much we're asking for. Kind of laid out. So at um a hundred, at the maximum acreage, which would be a hundred and seventy two acres, and I'll get back to how we can decrease that too. At seventy thousand dollars an acre. We're looking at. Am I getting this right, sorry, I don't have my glasses, so. About twelve million dollars worth of land donation. Not six hundred and fifty million dollars, we're twelve twelve million is what we're looking at.
See how she did that, she did that big number, then twelve.
Yeah, 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 right.
Oh, you don't like a billion bucks, well, let's do it this way then.
Oh, just how much land we would need.
I know, but how much were you thinking?
So what they requested, and I I told them this needs to be negotiable, um they are currently using fifteen. Um. Sorry, eight to twelve acres for their elementary schools, twenty to twenty five for junior high and fifty acres for high school. I I, you know, and my eyes raised, I'm like, is that a lot?
Acres for a high school, what did you say Walmart is, ten?
No, it's a hundred thousand.
Oh, it's a hundred hundred thousand, but uh Walmart will occupy a city block, roll more westy block, and that's. Was city block ten?
So I was just thinking comparison, right, highs.
Yeah.
The Taj Mahal out there is on fifty acres.
It's on, it's on fifty acres, so yeah, um let I'll give a little bit more for context, so trying to negotiate with that, I I asked, I was like, okay. The school does not have a lot of expertise in planning. Um I mean, they've they've done schools, but they they don't. Have a lot of expertise in planning, and even I think with their buildings, the efficiency of their lots, how they fit in the community, so I asked. Them, I said, if the developers provided the architectural plans, would you build their plans instead of, cuz right now they buy their plans. And they have a certain amount of time they can repeat them, and so that's why they plot just the same thing everywhere, it's it's cost savings for them. And so I was like, how can we reduce this number, cuz this is just a lot of land, and they said. If if they give us a different plan that works, we're good with that, we can combine it with community parks and figure out how to. How to kind of create those together and save landscape, we put the junior high by the high school, we can save land. So they were open to all sorts of different arrangements to try and produce that land, um which which is, cause that's. I I think there's room for improvement on how much land is required on those, and I think with some ideas and some. Some design that could be accomplished.
I'm curious, I it so in in my past life, right, I I was involved in. As a developer, purchasing land from the school trust land association, SITLA, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So so that is a huge component of funding for schools.
Yes, I sit on the board, the community council that distributes that money, yeah.
So so SITLA is, so from a developer's perspective, I. Uh negotiated and, you know, we successfully won under contract and developed land from SITLA.
Yes, enough money goes into the trust line funds, yes.
And interestingly enough, in that transaction. The school board for the area in which we bought this land. Bought the land from us, so I I think that's, I think that's really. It's arms length, right? And so it's a true arms length transaction, we bought land from SITLA. We developed the land according to the terms uh under, you know, under that contract, and the school board. Um, bought land from us for a school inside of that development, and so. I think what I learned out of that was, you know, again, it's true arms length and. There is money to buy land for school sites from, and that is, that is the purpose.
So that is not the purpose of SITLA, so the way school trust, you're talking about the school trust line funds, correct?
Correct.
Okay, none of that money can actually go to school purchasing property, all of that money is distributed directly to schools, and it has to be. Goal oriented only for academic performance, and to give you an idea. South August Junior High gets a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a year, and that money goes. Right now, we're using it to pay for matching funds for Chromebooks, just for just for the basic necessities. To pay for enough teachers at the school, cause they don't actually have enough money from the district to pay for the teachers. And classroom supplies, that's how far it goes, none of it goes to land. So they have money, but it's it's not coming from there, it's coming from the taxpayer dollar.
Fair enough, I you know, I I thought that was an interesting transaction, cause I remember thinking to myself, wow, you know, with with. And 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 in fairness, maybe another analogy is also bought property from the church. And the church bought property back from us for church sites, right? So um.
I don't understand the correlation you're making though, because.
The correlation that I'm making is typically. As we, so we've done a lot of developments with schools, churches. And there's a, there's a transaction there, right, typically in 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 these communities, right? So this community, we absolutely intend to have schools and this and that, but you know, usually there's a, there's a transaction. That takes place for the acquisition.
And that is what's happened consistently, but our taxes have gone up because the way they get that money is they bond for it. And they bond for it years before the schools are actually built. So the current taxpayers have to drum up all the money to pay for all of those new schools. And so it's the local taxing authority that actually pays for the land and the schools itself. The state SITLA, they pay more for the staffing and and those type of things, so this is direct impact.
Sounds like a positive scheme, so we're paying, we gotta go get more so that we can pay.
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
I think it goes back to the last meeting we had, when I stated that it was poor planning and poor financial planning on the schools part, right? So it seems like.
So you, okay, so what if they don't build it for six hundred and fifty five million, they can do it for five hundred million?
Um, so is what I'm saying is, if they planned better, we wouldn't be in this situation, cause even if we. Raise taxes, however we give them the money, they're still not correctly spending it, especially if they're wasting in the way I understood Jeff just said.
No, they weren't wasting it, they.
Yeah, yeah, not not waste.
It, the state owns the land, so the way Utah was set up is certain land was designated for community purposes. And it was supposed to generate money for public service, this Utah's the only state that runs this way, so there's. Land in Utah that can be leased, and that money is put into the trust land fund for schools. It just happened to be ironic that the land that they wanted the school on was owned by the.
Again, I, you know, they, you know, maybe, maybe that analogy guys are perfectly fit, other than, you know. Typically in these situations, what we run into is, you know, there there is, there are funds for those acquisitions for these sites. And I'm I'm literally trying to come up with a time in which we donated. Land for schools.
There used to be um impact fees, schools could charge impact fees, but when the state legislature got rid of that. That's when the tax burden got higher and higher, and they're planning, they would love to plan more, the problem is they're living hand to mouth. There, there are a lot of times they they can't increase the taxes very easily, and so all they're doing is refinancing and refinancing, because. They're not in control of how many students they have to serve. So when we approve this development, they automatically have to take. A cones worth of students into their funding, they have, they have no vote, they have no say. And they really don't have any extra money until those homes are built and tax paying for. They would name an after you on share. I would like land donated for the schools, it'll be designated, yeah, like the developer.
Selfie services.
That is. So instead of having a bunch of undeveloped open space, I'd rather see part of that go towards schools.
So it's the flip side of that, that then the school district is gonna allow the public to use that space.
Well, you got two problems with that too, because there's other landowners out there are gonna be doing those tens and twenties. And they'll do just as many of these homes, so where do they, where do they fit in?
We would have to figure out something like we've done with the.
So you can't, you can't put it all on one developer's, what I'm saying. And then they'll end up like California, your billing permit down there is half the cost of your lot. And these guys will have to put it on top, cause there's no magic man that pays that bill.
We've done that for the parks, we've asked for a lot of acreage for parks. Parks, but not for the schools and not for other infrastructure, I mean, we are demanding this infrastructure of the community, and we're demanding that the community pay for it.
So they got kids too, and they'll be sending them. You know, all.
That can't be funded, cause we have to fund the new school. That's what's happening, my, the kid, the school that my kids go to can't even be locked down, twice this year, we had masked intruders go into Bonneville High. And beat down a kid, cause we cannot secure our school, we don't have two and a half million dollars to secure our school, cause we have to keep building new. And newer and newer schools, so as a taxpayer, I don't, I would say. I veto this development because it's not going to benefit me, and it's not gonna benefit my community, it's going to burden us unfairly tax wise, so. We're not saying we want six hundred and fifty five million dollars, we're saying.
We, there's also gonna be.
Twenty million dollars worth of land.
Some uh some type of adjustment in there too.
So let's talk about that, can we reduce the open space? Can we do more units? What can we do to to make it more equitable?
Sarah, we're maxed on units, right?
Oh, go ahead, I'll I'll come in after.
Yeah, ma- maxed on units, I, you know, I don't think that's gonna solve it. Cause you know, that was the dialogue in the beginning about where we came up with that number.
But the way you come with that number includes no schools in these zones. And we have to have, we have to have all these schools in these zones because that's the demand.
Yeah, I, there's a, there's a tipping point, right, on diminishing returns, right, where, so so. And again, I I'm, there's no politically correct way to go about this, right, but. So our typical experience is, you know, we go in, we mask the plan, school district approaches us and says, hey, we wanna do a junior high, you know, amongst your school. And they say, this is where we'd like it, and then we, we, that price for that land, that acquisition is dictated by. What we lose, right?
And.
In in property value and revenue, that's literally how the acquisition gets.
I I I know, and that's really expensive for us taxpayers to fund, your boss, when really, we as the taxpayers gave you that game, you owned. You own ag ag land out here that's worth nothing with no access, so when we generate all of this, like all of this. Is because the taxpayer said, okay, we will give you this. But if they find out by giving you this, their taxes and their quality of life goes down, they don't want this.
Oh, so my point was all going back to how the state charter dictates how schools are funded. The schools are funded purposely by property taxes. Because they want everybody to share in the burden of schools, we want to all invest in the future of our communities by funding schools together. And this is part of the reason why the governor's office is encouraging states, cities, counties. And municipalities to approve more density, because the more units they have to to contribute to this property tax. The more funding will go to schools through the natural property tax funding that's allocated to schools. And so part of the reason that we're asking for the units here is so that you'll have more units to share the cost of. The schools that need to be built. Um, and then if the state is gonna push growth on everybody in the in the state, all of us are. Are living the consequences of the governor's office for the last forty years pushing. Major commercial and industrial growth in our state. They've they've focused on creating jobs and new opportunities for Utahns for forty years. And we've undersupplied the building to keep up with that growth for twenty five of those years. And so it's a delicate balance that we're trying to strike here. And what we're trying to do is find a balance between how the state allows us to pay for schools. And what is an inequitable exaction from a developer? And so I can't point to another development where a developer was required to donate all of the school land. I can't point to another development in Utah where the developer was required to, without the mechanism of an impact fee. Contribute a significant sum of dollars towards funding the schools in that area. And so what I would want us to kind of take a a logical approach to this is. How do we make this an equitable situation that doesn't set a bad precedent for everybody else that comes behind us? We're not unwilling to contribute, um but we are unwilling to set a precedent that. Sets us up for fail- failure in the future via a an an unfair exaction on the part of the county to the developer. So if there's a balance there, I I would like to explore that some more, and maybe that's um density transfers in the N B A. So that some of those, you know, density credits, if we do a school site. Here or there, then those transfers can, you know, the units can be transferred to another area and increase density there. Yeah, and so that's part of it, the other part of it is. If we do some sort of allocation where the school sites are donated, we'd love to, as a developer, get credit for that. Because if we can get, so. An example of that would be sometimes when the county is required to gift a road to U dot or a gift a right away to U dot, they get a credit for that, that they can use to offset some of their budget constraints. If the developer, if we could figure out a way to get some credit for the school property that we give. That would be a a fair way to address that exaction too, maybe it's a tax write off or a benefit that we wouldn't have otherwise get.
We can monetize.
That we can monetize, is it a conservation easement that we can monetize or sell some way? I don't know what that mechanism is, I'm just throwing it out there as a, you know, possible work through scenario, but. It is a difficult situation that the state places us in, because they want all of the property taxes to fund schools by itself. And they've been reluctant to put other mechanisms in place to pay for schools. We're one of the only states that doesn't have a lottery that contributes a huge sum of money to the state for schools. And so some of those discussions I would love to see us push for, you know, and and I know there are moral. And other questions associated with a state lottery and everything else, but I'm telling you. What we're doing right now with the state pushing all this growth our way via job creation and forcing us to. To look at some of these housing situations in a new light and approve more density, it does make this problem extremely acute. And it makes it so that we have to address it somehow.
All right.
Yeah, since I want to do.
Before we get too in the details here, when you talk about exploring this further, I already have an issue with this whole conversation. Because I will not let this board and this body negotiate on behalf of another established entity. That we were school district, which I just can't do, I know we do it to a degree for the park district, and that's already a tough pill for me to swallow. But with somebody like the school district who has their own legal counsel and who has their own established funding and everything. We can't negotiate on behalf of the school district. We can say, hey, developer, you guys go ahead and go over and talk with the school district, work something out amongst yourselves, figure it out, whatever's good. Report back and let us know, but to go beyond that, I think to have this conversation and really to try to pinpoint a number. For the school district, without even having the school district here, makes me extremely uncomfortable, going back to your comment on the exactions. That's exactly why I'm being so uncomfortable about that, so.
I will address the exa- exaction issue, this is not an exaction. The developer is asking for a rezone, and when they are asking from us, we can, we can protect our community.
Right, we can.
And so we don't have to have top numbers, but conceptually, um I would, not avoiding the numbers, I would say conceptually, yes, I will. I would require that you meet with the school district and say what they require. Um, single family homes do not generate enough money for schools, actually, every single family home. That is placed puts the schools at a deficit.
Yeah, and and they create the same sort of deficit when you're talking about roads and streets and.
Actually asking for property.
And that's why, like, Envision Utah did a study fifteen years ago that said that if you approve density at a ratio of over seven and a half units to the acre. It does actually start to pencil, so that it actually contributes, you know, and it outperforms via property taxes. It outperforms other asset classes until you get the big box recap, right? And so. The balance here is, we're trying to get enough rooftops in so that there is a significant contribution via property taxes. To outweigh some of the potential negatives of the long term maintenance and care of this community, right?
The size of this is what's the biggest issue, because it is.
It's also the biggest benefit.
It's a big benefit, but from the front loading of it, it is very difficult to swallow, because you're asking for. A a county that already has very low property tax, and we're talking from county or any other entity in the county. We have lower property tax values than anywhere in the state, and so we're already working at a deficit, and then trying to add. More and so much more into one county's purview is a big ask, and that is why I think it's fair that this isn't. This isn't the same situation as going into Vineyard or going into Provo, cause they're going to have much higher property values going in. And they actually have a lot more area to distribute it through, Weber County fills this much more deeply than all of those other areas.
Yep, and one of the new funding mechanisms, you know, via the P I Ds and I F Ds, some of these can help relieve some of those concerns. Because we are gonna utilize alternative funding mechanisms to pioneer some of this growth out here. And that could be something, if you wanna add in, we can add in some uh language. Like Liam's talking about, where we work in good faith and approach the school district to find some sort of resolution towards this. And we work towards it, and you know, maybe that negotiation is totally outside of this, but in the N B A, it requires us to work in good faith to try and.
In the letter and.
And then, yeah, and and frankly, some of those alternative funding sources may be able to be allocated towards paying for future school improvements or something like that. If it's done correctly, I've had some experiences with P I Ds and if I F Ds where. Not all of those public improvements are actually public improvements, so de- depending on how the charters exist with those individual districts. We'd have to really dive into that to make sure that that that's a mechanism, but that could also be something that we discuss with the school district and. And maybe there's a mechanism to make that equitable on the the P I D or I F D funding. So we would be, we would love to continue this discussion, and we are not shying away from it at all. Um, and and we will, you know, absolutely, this is a normal course of business for us to approach the school districts right out of the gate. Here's our plan, here's what we think. You know, would you like a site here or there, and let's talk about that, that's a normal course of business for us on any size development. And this one is certainly one that we will approach proactively with the school district as well.
And I did create a draft language after our meeting, Sarah, that I sent to Charlie. For for the actually the black fine uh development agreement we're talking about, that does. It's generic, basic language that says, hey, developer, you go talk with the school district, figure out the details. Bring us back a letter and let us know the school district's feelings.
Okay.
But I just want us to not be the negotiator in this conversation.
Okay.
Cause that becomes a little bit, it goes outside of the fine commission's purview. And I feel like we're. And I feel like we're trying to put on different path.
The more fees we put on this level, the less houses are attainable.
Not true.
And we're always, we're already facing that.
Page twenty-two, right, Charlie?
I hate to do this, but in the interest of what we came here tonight to do, so I'm gonna give this two more minutes. And then we're gonna move on. Because the only way that I'm interested in this is if we get these guys talking to the school district correctly. I I agree with legal, I can't disagree with it and I certainly agree with with Director Grover in that I think this is a little bit outside of our preview. I'm not saying it's not important and I'm not saying I wouldn't support something that would come out of it. I just think it's outside of what we're here to do. And the only way though, I will add this caveat for me personally. The only way that I would entertain anything that comes out of this is that if that, if this development of these schools, if if something works out. Is available for use by the general public and it is not kept at bay from the general public. Because that's what we have happening. There's no partnership, there's never been a will to partner. With the general public, even though the general public is paying the taxes for these schools, for the people to be able to use these school facilities. Off hours and without it being a great big act of Congress in order to have that happen. So. There's my two cents worth. You got two more minutes and then we're moving on.
Andrew, I I agree with that, but it may make you happy to know that they are beginning to love them. Like West Haven has an agreement with the new junior high. But it's not not like it should be.
That is the way it should be and I wouldn't entertain anything less than that with this.
In in not my school phone, it's all that way. We don't have those concessions. South Ogden's rec center is combined with the junior high. U N T Elementary is open all hours when it's not. So. And and that's how the school district wants to work with these developers is create a good community that works together.
I I'm willing to give up some open space for it, but I really, in fairness to these guys, they would have to be able to do that somehow. And it would turn into higher density and then we'd have to have that conflict with the with the community that's out there existing at this time. So, that's another conversation for another day. Willing to have it, but not now.
Because it is hard to act in so many isolated areas. I know when we're working with the parks, we like to have them at the table because. We're the ones starting to access and we know kind of the terms of what we're asking and we're the ones that can can offset the the cost. So, how how do we work with the school?
We're not the ones that can offset the costs, right?
Oh, yeah, with our.
Parks is, we may suggest things, but we're the parks is the one that dictates that, just like every other entity, am I not right?
Right, and we don't have to do anything on behalf of the park. We can say, hey, parks, go figure it out with the developer, we'll be done. And truthfully, I would like it better than we do, I would. But in the parks, go figure it out with the developer.
But if they do and the developer comes to us and says, hey, we want to fulfill this agreement with the park. We want to fulfill this agreement with the schools. Um, would you be willing to give in this area or that area? How do we connect that all together? I just hate that we don't work as a unit.
Yeah, but I I don't think it's necessarily always our position and responsibility to do that. I mean, to a degree it is. The school district needs to figure out the school district stuff, the park district needs to figure out the parks district stuff. Eventually, we're gonna stop doing things on behalf of the park. It's gonna, they're gonna be left on their own. Right, exactly. And so the time will come. And so I think right now even to try to interject ourselves and. And I understand the thought process that we wanted all right inclusive, so we can see the whole picture, but. Not our place and not our responsibility, really.
But our responsibility is local head there.
And your county did work to set up the park districts or help set up the park districts out there to help get them going. So, we helped to a certain extent with the park district where we haven't done that with the schools. Maybe they hit back in the early days.
I'm sure there is a beginning to it somewhere. It's just there's a disconnect here that's really rough because we're the land use authority and we generate. The the demand. I will help you get in touch with this school.
Just so everyone else, I said Sarah and I chatted just right before the meeting about this and to her credit. The school district now knows that a gate could cost them or could save them six hundred fifty-five million dollars over at the high school. So. Uh, it's that's a worthy negotiation.
Sarah, thanks for for all of that. Appreciate why you're doing that. So I just wanna say that. It is important. I just think that we had this conversation yesterday. And that is why is the planning commission, and I don't want to get off track from this because we already have too far. But why is the planning commission the gatekeeper for everybody or the police for everybody? And I've said this for more than several years now. And especially with with the parks districts that. We can't, we've got to, we've got to get to a point where we're taking care of the business that we're here for. And and that's enough. But in the meantime, because of the way things are set up and have been operating. The 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 school district is an entity of its own, it's represented, it it's representative on everybody's tax separately. It's 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 its own entity and I think that any negotiations to take place have to take place between the developer and the school district. Happy to have that be part of this if that's what it comes to. And if if it's an agreement that they fairly come to with the school district, but I think in fairness of what we're doing here, we need to move on with what we have in front of us. And we need to continue doing that because I think we we take too many forks in the road. So, had that conversation with Liam and several others yesterday. So, anyway, let's let's uh let's move on. Where are we at, Charlie?
Sixty forty, sixty uh completed, forty incomplete, naturally incomplete, whatever word you wanna use for that. Sometimes that's just area to expand into. Um, maybe I was just thinking and I hate to go use the word, but maybe it's uh forty percent goes uh to schools and we just close the gap.
We could say to community investment or community infrastructure and then it could be fire, it could be municipal building, it could be stool and it could. It could go anywhere.
Yeah, we we have already worked something out on fire, but uh, yeah, let's uh. Look, let us talk a little bit about that. Let's see if we can come up with something that uh really makes you guys happy.
Yeah, we'll work Smith out. Where did you get to, Charlie? Where are you?
Uh, I'm on page twenty-three.
So, so, so since we're on this this subject of parks and excluding the cool school conversation from it. Here we go. Here here we have in front of us ten acres per one thousand people. That's what we've said in motion into this agreement. We're already asking these guys to give up that much open space and contribute that much toward parks. I'm just gonna say one more thing. How can we expect more than that? Um, and then we're gonna move on. Let's go.
One of the things that.
Question.
Is is the question. One of the things that uh the agreement that uh they sent over in the beginning said. Um, that I'm rethinking now, uh, it did say that um. School properties could count as part of that park area. Um, we'll talk a little bit more about that and we'll bring something to you next uh next week and if you guys like it, great. If you don't, we just roll it back. We'll see what we can do there. Okay, um, as far as dedication of uh park space go, the so the biggest issue. Here is obviously, everybody loves really cool developments with really cool parks. Everybody loves recreation, I believe there's a property values and it helps community health, yada, yada, yada. How do you get from a field to a park? Uh, when you're building one house at a time, it's a hard thing. So, I've asked for a few concessions from them in terms of how we picked up the property. Uh, the either the county or the county does it um and then on behalf of the park district. Um, they did ask us to, uh, we had some stuff about park district consent and stuff like that in there. Uh, we're pull that out. With instead in favor of, it's just the county, just like Liam said, it's just the county and the um. Uh, applicant working through the details and then um, once the county knows what it's gonna get as far as parks go and knows what it can handle as far as. Far as parks go, that's when we get the parks district involved after we've taken acquisition of the property. That said, if the county's not willing to or ready to accept the land, but we know in forty years from now, we might be. You know, maybe there's a deferred conveyance. Uh, so I'm on eight point eight point two point two. Maybe there's a deferred conveyance mechanism that we put in there where. Um, we tell them, we've got full control over this park area. Do what you need to do, have the H O I do what it needs to do and at some point in the future, we might come. I'm not gonna go, kind of like we do deferred stuff for streets, street improvements sometimes. Quarter park, quarter park. Um, I hope we don't have to talk about a hundred D P more for good. Page, uh, bottom twenty-two. I just have a hundred, one hundred outlined or highlighted there.
And then maybe we should go back to three.
As long as, as long as the schools are right inside of that. Okay, um. So, okay, next one down, eight point eight point three, uh, public park open space improvement. So, when you look at. The previous section, that's about public park park open space dedication and how acquisition of that happens. And what happens if the county's not ready to take it or if the county can't take it or if the park district can't take it. Um, it does say that uh public park open space does count whether it's sixty percent finished or the forty percent unfinished. It does count if it's private as long as it's open to for use to the public. Taking that same cue from uh you guys in our conversation about Black Pine a couple of work sessions ago. When we looked at that strip of um, uh, that buffer strip that we saw up on the screen and I said, is that open space? And you guys said, yeah, that looks like oh, it's landscaped, that's open spaces. Not a park, but it it seems like you can go take your dog over there and go to that. And so, I do have something in here that says. That um strips and small pieces and corridors, that all can be contributed towards open space with one condition. That it is landscaped uh with quantitating landscape measures. Unless it's turf grass and the turf grass is gotta be usable turf grass, not viewable turf grass. Okay, only reason we say that is because we don't want to encourage turf grass unless obviously there's some benefit to the community on that. Other than you share. Any questions about that? Concerns, thoughts? Um, moving on from there, uh, everything under eight point eight point three. I've got a caveat off the sides uh to the side here where it talks about, this is comment C E thirty-four on page twenty-three. Uh, maybe instead of requiring any of these improvements. We have them do the same thing they're doing with stormwater. Go to a parks and recreation master plan. Well, let's figure that out. Let's figure out what your service need is gonna be. Let's figure out what ten acres per thousand is. So, my suggestion is we put that in there as the, this is what they're probably going to do. And in the event that that master plan doesn't turn out, doesn't work out and we don't like it, we still have this other stuff in here as the default. But as long as the master plan. Provides a better, as good or better than this, which it will because this really isn't asking for very much. Then we could take the nickel and dining out of the park and uh. They can work with us, they can work with the park district and we can come up with something. So really, we're kind of deferring some of that planning until later. Um, while making sure that they've got a commitment to their entitlement upfront so they can actually start investing in that kind of stuff.
And and for what it's worth, like, we we, we like that idea. Because in the spirit of everything we've been talking about, there's so much planning still left to do. Um, that that is something that is really, really high on our list on as it relates to parks. And community plan because at the end of the day, we don't sell anything unless we have just a really, really. Very aggressive and great trail system, park system. So, we will put a lot of thought effort into it. As we approach all of it. So, we we like that idea and we think that that's a smart way to approach. The uh, the parks.
I would love to take credit for it, but it was yours, so.
I like the idea just because I'm thinking about what parks looked like when I was a kid compared to what parks are now. They're a lot different, a lot more options and then thirty years, if this is gonna take that long, it could change again, so.
That's right.
There's a community out in uh, on the outskirts of Eagle Mountain, right? So, way out there is what I'm saying. So, I'm saying we're way out there as well. And we've watched what they've done and it's been, it's been pretty cool. They, their first approach was all about parks and trails before they even decided what product they were gonna build. They went and did a full and complete master plan as it relates to parks. And interestingly enough. The very first thing they built was a skate park, can you believe that? And a V M X park. They built that. And then they started building houses and we've watched that with great interest.
How many acres is that project?
That was huge. Uh, I think overall it's over four thousand acres, huge massive and. And they, but they're just started, right? So phase one is, it's on the ground. I think you guys are dealing with. Um, the D A I folks on some other stuff. That's a D A I project that I'm running called Firefly. Great project and I've been very interested and watched them. And and talked with them many times about their approach, but their approach was parks and trails first.
So they're building a place that was not gonna hinder, I guess, the building pay and safety issues, things like that?
Yeah, the very first improvement they built was a downhill mountain bike park. The very first, even before the skate park and the V M X park. So we went snowmobiling to discuss all this. Anyways, it was those guys, but.
No, the park in here.
Definitely have our meetings.
But the downhill mountain bike park specifically, a lot of it encompassed ground that they couldn't have otherwise built on because it was over thirty percent slow. So they had some foothill property that they said, well, we can't do anything else with this. Let's build some cool mountain bike trails. And so they started. They worked their way through the rest, the rest of the master community plan. So, really cool approach. Um, we've done something similar. We're doing a a a baseball centric. Master plan in Salem right now that uh we're building. A huge baseball complex with a soccer complex and uh other things in it. So, anyways. Great approach to it, so.
It's crazy, it's the the parks director of Salem, he's a softball guy. So I'm surprised you can get away calling it a baseball park.
But he also, he also coaches little league baseball.
All right, real quick, um, Lance wants to make some comments. Um, he he he's due. Yeah, he's at all these meetings. Keep it short, Lance.
I I can't speak for Joe Giordano, he's a totally other park district, but uh, I just. Hope that Charlie and and the two park districts, maybe we can meet to dispel this. I must referencing them in the back of my mind after something you said, Charlie, was. I saw it on the Black Pine. A roundabout, though it's Mark Drave, as a park. That is not a park.
Right.
So, uh, I would love to sit down and come up with some kind of a.
It's a yoga.
Formula or criteria. To be able to say, this this is and this isn't, this to go towards towards their their donation.
What do planning commissioners, what do you guys think about that? I'm going back to that strip that we saw in Norton Commons that was landscaped right in the buffer. The the perimeter of that property, everybody had known.
Had some trees in it, it was some like wood fence or something, yeah.
Yeah, um. That's, I've got the same question Lance does. Is that open space that should count as public park open space or is that a buffer that they would otherwise put in anyway? That's.
I feel like there needs to be a minimum width for it to be considered usable park space, you know? I I think that could could help.
Minimum width and area?
Width and area, yeah.
Let's go measure that roundabout and just make sure that it's just a little bit bigger than the roundabout. Park equals minimum width. And Lance, we'd love to take you out to some of our Vineyard and Eagle Mountain properties where we've done these big linear parks and trail systems.
With Joe is the one you'll wanna take. I'm I'm on the other side of the river, Joe's on your side.
And trails would have to be excluded from that. Like there's a trail through it and it's a little different than if it's just. Am I, could you think, are we counting trails as open space? What are we doing with trails?
So, this does count trails as open space. It counts the right, what what I've got written here and this is a question I was gonna have for you guys anyway. It counts the right away um as open space and if it's not maintained or groomed or whatever, it's natural open space. But the width of the trail plus two feet, so twelve feet wide would be uh finished. So that would. If if we're trying to get into the weeds and figure out how are we measuring what's contributing to finish and what's contributing to natural, we would do a better.
And then if they ever, and if we have a certain width that we can say if there's a certain width in addition to that trail, then that can be considered. But it has to meet a certain width requirement, not like you added one extra foot all the way along the trail and now we've got twelve acres.
Yeah, I'm gonna go back a couple of sentences here. So what is open space? Does it have to be usable or does it just not be built on?
You guys remember uh, the one of the little triangle pieces that the Black Pine folks showed us? Uh, and they said, we just kind of repurposed this area for open space. It was repurposed because it was not usable. Now, that is. Now, that is a possibility to have as open space. Maybe it's a plaza, maybe there's a bench there. Um, does it count?
If it's a landscaped area or a natural area that, that provides nothing that's built on it. In my world, that's open space.
Okay.
So maybe, just maybe, but I, I'm interested to hear, this is a good conversation. So open space, you just mentioned Norton Commons and this buffer around a, a Duke Black, a town hall.
It was actually around the perimeter, it was it was the buffer between the highway and some of the streets on the inside of the project. It wasn't very wide. It was maybe eighty, thirty feet wide.
But thirty feet is possibly usable, depending on what's planted there. I can see the residency.
I walked over there and I thought it'd be fun to take my dog out and go to the bathroom here. I wasn't just, I wasn't just.
Usable space, and we're talking about open space.
Yeah, right, yeah, exactly, yeah.
If we had thirty foot, we'd put a trail on it.
Yeah.
I would too.
And there, there, there possibly could be, so, you know, some additional terminology. Greenbelt, right, is often referred to as an open space component. Greenbelt being.
A visual relief or something different from the associated ground.
And so you take, take a couple of town hall complexes, right, and there's a space up the middle. Greenbelt, it's usable, it counts as o- open space, so, you know, anyway.
So if the roundabout had a fountain in it, there you go.
Yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, it depends on how wide that is. If there was ten feet between the town halls, you're like, nah, that's not really usable. So that's why it's like.
When, when you're among ag, ag people and in a county that is transitioning, don't use the term.
I gathered that. Yeah, greenway.
There we go.
Well, let me, let me check in with this other table again on open space. Is the roundabout that's landscaped, is that open space?
No, because you don't want people.
That's green waste.
Green waste.
That's green, there you go.
How, what percentage could be green waste? Okay, everybody on the same page with that? Okay, that?
Yeah.
Well, in my opinion, uh, I don't think, and that the, the document does say it, nothing within a right of way is, that, that's just the street. Now, if you happen to have some great landscaping in there, and it, that does say that in here, and I was gonna make sure that a Black Pine agreement said that as well, so. Um, now, granted, there's some pretty big, uh, right of way corridors that aren't gonna have roads in here right away. We would count those as open space. Okay. I'll look at some minimum width, contiguity and area to qualify as open space. The other reason why this, this draft calls the open space what it does, public park open space is because of the idea that maybe there's these other open space areas that are useful. Um, I wanted to make sure the public park side of it, um, was pretty clear. This is area that is open to the public and can be public use. Other types of, uh, open space areas that, you know, maybe it's HOA owned, or maybe it's above and beyond the ten acres per thousand. Those are fine, still do them, and we're not gonna penalize you for having them, we're not gonna, um, uh, incentivize you to have them as long as the, the public component of that ten acres to thousands there. They have no reason to, to get into weeds on the rest of it, but I would say, is okay with that. In that case, I'm moving on to page twenty-four. Um, more of the story, just, uh, just finishing off, uh, twenty-three and getting into twenty-four, more of the story is, we got a backup plan, so. Um, if for whatever reason, you guys get out there and they realize, gosh, we can't do that, uh, that recreation plan. Or they wanna start plating before they do the recreation plan, we've got a minimum, even though it's, fill it's nickel and dining, I still have a little bit of indigestion about it. But it is the minimum amount of park fragments per house that has to be balled together to create, um, a, a park area per plant. Um, so certain amount of, um, uh, pavilion area, certain amount of park area, certain, or a playground area, certain amount of um, field area, that kind of stuff. And so, uh, they fall back on that, especially with phases one through one and two. If they're looking to get going very quick, they could start with that and then work for, with their master plan after that. Uh, financial guarantee, open space, oh, water, um, open space and water, that's gonna be really important. Doesn't make any sense to put together a park that cannot be irrigated and say, have fun, go play. Um, but, uh, we're not gonna dictate where that water's coming from. It'll, it'll have to be here and, um. They'll figure it out. That's just how developers do it, uh. And we don't control water, so better to let that go, uh, to them. We just wanna make sure it's there. Uh, natural park areas, this is where that forty percent comes in. So when you say, what's a natural park? Well, I'm thinking the Weaver River corridor, other waterways improved, uh, improvements, let's see what you've got here. Uh, I, my thoughts were just Weaver River corridor and other waterways was the primary things I was thinking was a natural park. Um, but I think the, the byway, uh, parcel would be a great natural park. Uh, in fact, um, talking to, to Joe Giordano, uh, about that byway, he said, well, if we're gonna put that there, look, don't put a paved don't put a paved trail in there, put, put a horse trail in there. That sounds great, it's right next to the, the bird area, yeah, it's a, that's, that's a great idea. And that's the question I have on pathways.
Yeah, that, that's cheaper.
Well, I, um.
I have learned to never agree.
I thought you were gonna put a period at the end of that. I've learned to never agree.
Yeah. When it comes to cost, but I'll, uh, I, I mean, I wanna make note of that, because that is, that's, that's a great idea. And that's an example of what we were trying to say the other day, and saying, we are gonna collaborate with the park district along the way. We're not gonna go create this master plan in a vacuum. Master parks plan, we, we will do it with collaboration, and that's a great, and that's the reason why, it's great feedback. That's a great idea.
Yeah, um, within that, uh, Weaver River corridor, or in those natural areas, we're asking for minimal improvements to the banks as long as they don't have to pull a state permit or federal permit. Once they've got, start getting down in the water, that's just a lot of effort and um, they'll go pull those permits on their own, uh, if they feel it's needed. We just wanna make sure that uh, frankly, when they do their stormwater and flood master plan, it's gonna make more sense for them to take those banks down anyway. Uh, you just get a lot more about the volume out of that river when you do. Um, removal of vegetation and hydro seeding, which is for make sure that you get in there. We're not gonna require a ton of re-landscaping or anything like that, just a native seed mix. Um, the, we don't want it to be dirt that just collects all the weeds at that time, so just something, it's kind of like what you got does on the freeway off and on ramps, um. When they would let those go natural. Okay, uh, phasing, open space, we've already talked a bit about phasing. I think I have a little bit of redundancy in here. I gotta go back and delete some of the other stuff. Standards, let's see. Oh, uh, eight point eight bits, point four is just project specific, uh, public park open space, which, um. We'll have a little bit about the, uh, the master plan that they'll put together, and then the second one is, uh, let's say, uh, page twenty-six, eight point eight point four point two. That's community open space areas. And this is getting right to kind of the question we were just talking about. Meaning open space areas not within a designated improved or natural park shall be allowed to count as improved public park open space pursuant to uh, this, oh, eight point eight point three, excuse me, when in compliance with the following, it's gotta be open to the public. Uh, it's gotta be landscaped, maintained and operated by a professionally managed HOA or similar entity. Plantings need to be irrigated with drip irrigation, except for if it's turf, it could be sprinkler, but the turf, X one turf has to be um, uh, usable for human activity, um, and then, uh. Area shall not be on a site intended for future development or, or to count towards minimum landscape standards. So, um, don't, don't give us a, a, a private park that turns into a Walmart later.
Hmm, yeah, yes.
I don't know why that really just kind of flagged my attention as I was, uh, working on that paragraph.
Charlie, is this where you need some size requirements in this one as well, or this?
Uh, yeah, so we'll probably, this is probably where the size requirement. Actually, good, the call I wrote that into the page. Hey. The path to dedication, so all this stuff about pathways, the Black Line is really just, it's all part of the standard that we've been working on. Um, looking at, uh, bottom of page twenty-six, um, eight point nine point one point one and eight point nine point one point two. Uh, that's, don't look at that. It's just, I, uh, didn't finish that paragraph. So, I, I looked at that afterwards and realized, oh, I gotta finish that thought. I don't know if you guys, whenever you're typing, you know, you have a thought, you gotta finish it, but you're not ready to, so you just hit enter so that you know there's a space. If you ever see that, it's a sentence that trails off, it's because I the rest of it's. Got lost interest, yeah. Trailhead dedication. This is one that's gonna be hard without public park open space, so I go, or the, um, the plan. Uh, so A, the plan puts that together and really kind of figures this out. B, I'm thinking we should probably be looking at, if you're looking at the master plan. I think the four corners, the, uh, northwest, um, south and east corners. If we're looking at a park, trailhead, at least one in those corners or where the parks are, those parks can be trailheads too. Um, we're probably gonna be okay. One of the reasons on the north, um, the northeast side uh, as close to that sixty or fifty-nine hundred west street, that's where the pathway from Black Pines Industrial is gonna be coming over to pick up to the Weaver River. Now, we know they don't own most of that property, so we just have to figure that out, and maybe somebody else sells and that gets picked up as a park, uh, trailhead over there. Um, the south side down by where the, uh, the freeway overpass is, um, they're getting people down to the bottom of this property, considering the rest of it, south of this state property, that'd probably be a really good anchor on the other end. And then one, uh, maybe trailhead over by seventy-five hundred west on the north side. And I was gonna say on the south side as well, on, on seventy-five hundred, but there's already kind of a trailhead there that goes down into the, um, DWR property, so just maybe those three corners. What my thought is, any, any other thoughts on trailheads? When we look at trailheads, we're just looking a little bit of parking, maybe a restroom. Feel free to combine trailheads in with, um, other parks. I mean, it makes a lot of sense.
One thing is that the Ogden Bay folks did not want is a trailhead near them. So just so everybody knows.
I want three of them there then. You got a safety thing for them?
Yeah, they wanna control access pretty heavily into that area.
It's because they don't want, a lot of people trampling through, they also wanna know that somebody has a license, that they paid the fees to be there.
And they said the cats eat all the birds and eggs.
That's true as well.
They wanted a fifteen foot wide, uh, for fifteen foot tall solid, um, wall. I thought a little bit about that fifteen foot tall wall, so the cats can't jump over it, and then I just thought, you know, that's.
There's an open season, if it's over that line, right?
Why, why hide it, right? Yeah.
They do, Casey, correct me if I'm wrong, the gates are open during hunting season, right?
Only time, yeah. But if you had a neighborhood right there, there's no fence, right? Like, they'd be able to access it, people would be able to go over there and be in there, because you're not supposed to be on it without, outside of that season, because of the bird resting and all that stuff that's going on. Protecting the habitat, I guess.
Um, I do know that the DNR, DWR folks, they know that this is on the agenda tonight. They know there's a hearing next week for it, so they may come and have some good conversation with you, um. As may people who really, really like the bird refuge or whatever, um, so we'll see where that, that goes.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out what kind of wall you put up that wouldn't ruin the look, but still maybe where I could shoot close to those houses.
Right.
We, we've actually had conversations with them every time. So we, we've been in steady conversation with them. And, y- you know, we s- you know, we see eye to eye on some stuff, and a lot we don't, and, and, and it is true, sometimes I think, oh, why would we not want that? But then they explain themselves, and I.
For me, I mean, I'm glad they're protecting it.
Yes, absolutely, and I agree, and, and so we did agree and told them, you know, we will erect a non-scalable fence. Not fifteen foot tall, it's, it's not, this is not prison.
The cats are gonna have a hard time getting through the razor.
So anyway, we, we did land on the non-scalable fence, because, yeah, we did it. I mean, originally, I will say, naively, I went to them and said, oh, yeah, we, you know, maybe it's just a, you know, C three fence, because it's such a pretty area. And then, you know, they explained their position, and I was like, wow, I did not think of it that way.
And if you told them you were gonna put up the fifteen foot fence, they just said barbed wire is good enough.
Yeah. Amen, I don't.
History, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, pathway improvements, so stand right down through there. Uh, I wanted to talk to you guys about, uh, this idea of, um, I wish I would have brought it down. In their community plan, they do show, uh, some images of just beaten paths. Um, kind of like the one we're talking about right there, on, on the, the border of the bird refuge area. Um, I kind of thought, we are asking for a lot of paths. And I've got a path in my neighborhood, just up the road, that cuts between houses, and it's a bevy path. It probably used to be an alleyway, but people love to run down that thing, because it's soft. Um, and how would you feel if maybe we say, look, yeah, we're asking for something every four hundred or five hundred feet, but every other one or every fifty percent can be, um, uh, just a, a dirt path. Do you guys be okay with that? I think it'd actually make a really, I don't know how you guys would feel, but I think it'd make it really cool.
To have that option would be really cool. Uh, I, I can't say right out the gate without, you know, all of our planning that we intend to put in, but I think to have that option, very cool.
Would it have like kind of road base on it, or just?
Sorry, I, I do, I do.
Okay, because I'm, I'm imagining this like muddy, slurry mess.
It's funny, I live on.
We self-ride.
I live down in Utah County, right along the Murdoch Canal Trail, right? Nice, long, paved, ten foot wide. And right next to it is a naturally beaten dirt path that everybody runs on. So I, I think that option is very cool.
That's all, that'd be great.
Or sometimes if they just line either side with something, you can get away with sand as long as, or something like that, yeah.
And twenty-six, twenty-seven, um, this is all just pathway stuff that we've, uh, discussed in the past. Uh, we do have our pathway standard. There is something we do in, uh, have in here, uh, regarding their community plan shows that, uh, th- they show a cross section that adds a pathway on both sides. And those are eight feet wide, not our standard ten feet wide. Figure if it's on both sides, we're probably just fine, right? That's double the capacity of sixteen feet total, and, okay, as long as you guys are okay with that. Um, I'll say any street that has a pathway on both sides can, can be reduced down to the eight. Um, transit parcel, uh, so the general plan talks about making sure that there's space for potential future transit running along the rep. So we're asking for, it's not a really wide one, what did I tell you guys, forty feet, forty feet wide? Um, just enough to get BRT to be able to pass side by side, um, within that parcel. Right next to the rail line, and there is the water space. Um, I kind of surprised them with this one, because I think they were thinking, when we were saying transit would be within the rail corridor. I just wanna make sure we have the space and not have to deal with, uh, you be if you don't.
I'm sorry, I lost where you're at, what page are you?
Uh, now, page twenty-nine. Uh, within that transit parcel, that's where the, um, uh, uh, pathway would go, just, this is a placeholder. Um, and also a c- community amenity until UTA or some other transit authority thought about doing something like it. Other improvements, so this is just where we're asking for certain improvements at those trailheads. Again, we'll replace any of that with a open space map and plan that provides for any, you need that or better. Um, okay, turn the page to energy efficiency. Energy, environmental and air quality standards and energy efficiency, so. You guys know how, uh, you know. You guys know how we've, we've talked about this in the past, we talked about solar and, and stuff like that. When it comes to residential, we really don't wanna see it or need to see it, we don't need to force it. Uh, I did talk to these guys, and they mentioned, uh, they would definitely make sure that their packages have the option to upgrade if they want uh, to get into that, um, but, uh, I think like every other, uh, residential developer, we've been working with, it's just a hard ask, especially with um, how quickly the tech changes and all that kind of stuff. So I just had that as a placeholder off to the edge, just in case we ever do get a burn with that, and wanna see something, but um, I had already anticipated this one coming out, just wanted to make sure you guys are okay with that.
So what, what building are you talking about? Right, like, that's all that we took out, right?
Yeah, stuff in the column.
Yeah, stuff in the column is all out.
Yep.
That's all out.
We're the same.
All the stuff that you don't like.
I like that, yeah, okay.
That, that it's out, right? You like that it's out, that, you like that stuff you don't like.
Sweep that to the UBC.
Okay, and that's, yeah, you're. Yeah, uh, and in our draft, just so you know, our template, if you were to ever just download the template, it's in the column always.
Okay.
Um, just because I, I know that we're not inclined to use it, uh, uh, anytime soon. I don't wanna forget about it, but you know, we know how, how it works. One of the things when it comes to energy efficiency, we've been looking at the general plan talks about having buildings built to a, uh, climate zone, that's one zone, um, holder. The general plan talks about having buildings built to a climate zone that's one zone um holder. Talking with our building official, he said, you're not gonna see a difference uh when you do your rez checks between the zone we're in. And the one zone holder, uh just because of the way calculate uh the. Calculations fall out uh in in rez checks. I mean, you got an option if you go down in efficiency over here, but you go up in efficiency over here. It balances out and he said that he looked at it a few different ways and couldn't find a way to make it actually mean that they were doing something better. It's just they're spending more on windows um as opposed to uh installation in the way. Um but we do talk about um and a lot of our other agreements, we've got that um uh. Natural gas appliances having a ninety-five percent uh or greater efficiency. Um uh Jeff and Cameron, they've they've asked about, you know, what's the possibility? We just go with what the building code says as far as energy efficiency goes. The state is working towards more higher efficiency. They have to. We've got air quality issues. Um but. Yeah, and energy issue, but uh it's also a really hard pill for. The contractors and the builders and the home builder association to to see this kind of.
What what's the current code? For efficiency.
Oh, eighty percent or higher, I think, is what it is. I don't think you can buy anything.
Yeah, it kinda depends. Like with the manual J and D and your rez check, you can. Select a few different options and whatever combination gets you to compliance.
Okay.
So you could do theoretically, you could do less insulation in the attic and a higher efficiency furnace, and that would meet your rez check requirement. See what I'm saying?
Those old eighty, eighty percenters, they're a thing of the past. They don't.
I was gonna say, I don't think anyone's selling those, right?
A rez check, we have to do a ninety or a ninety-five.
Yeah.
Even to pass.
And that 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 uh selection. That that selection that we use a lot of times depends on what we're building. Right? And and out there will be building slab on grave. That's gonna, that will affect. What we grab and say, okay, this is how we're gonna get to that efficiency. So that's why we're saying. Let's let's just make it, let's tie it to building code.
And over the lifespan of a thirty-year agreement, the building code is gonna evolve, so.
If if probably will be.
Yeah, past experiences, but yeah.
When we get those uh those new reactors out there, we want to have any of this, it'll be clean power until meltdown.
Not to worry about the ducts either.
And actually, in case you guys don't know, they're talking about um uh many uh generators uh potentially being on the port area. Small ones that really have zero impact uh if there is a meltdown, uh that could be a good offset to some of the stuff we're looking at.
So you're looking at just striking energy efficiency altogether and we just took the building code?
Yeah.
I'm looking back.
Okay, we got uh standard on outdoor lighting and then building, development and design requirements for everybody to have here. Yeah, Charlie. So I'm on um eight point one to eight point twelve. Uh this is, I I rewrote this since last time you looked at it, I'm sure. Uh I'm just pointing to building and design requirements in the community plan. I'm writing right into the development agreement. The county is not responsible for enforcing or or. Ensuring that it gets done, but it is in the development agreement. So if it doesn't get done and it's a really big problem in the future, we do have a little bit of a stick there. But we're not, with our building permits and stuff like that, we're not helping to make sure houses comply with the with the standard.
Well, I'll be there.
We'll do that with an architectural committee that will have to approve architecture.
And I didn't know if you wanted a whole committee or a person, so it says the person parentheses.
And then we're also pointing to the community plan, which also has some minimum standards and level of building design.
I think that's all the land use. Let's see, planning permission and.
Probably your ten point ten of advanced land.
Oh, you're right. We gotta get to ten. Okay, so nine is just about how do you make changes and what things constitute a real change? That has to build the legislative process versus uh what can uh Rick decide? Um and and admin mini. Uh okay, now we're back over. We're on ten, page thirty-two. Financial guarantee requirements, financial for landscaping, let's see, okay. Um ten point five, I just put a placeholder for housing affordability. The intention is with the flex homes that these guys are are proposing, we'll put together a pretty good piece of language that says they propose something that's. Gonna gonna help us with this. Attainable. What did you say? You said achievable earlier. Attainable.
Affordable is in my neighborhood. Attainable to me than it is.
Housing attainability, you've got it. Okay, uh future taxes, services and districts. We're still being pretty generic when we talk about this. We just wanna make sure. Um well, first off, there's a caveat. We can't do runaway taxes. It's gotta be what's reasonable to take care of what cert- what uh services. Uh needs are and what um infrastructure needs are there. Um but the idea of a, where to go? It's oh, okay. Uh it's the ten point six point two primarily, still really simple. I haven't come up with anything uh broader than this. Master builder agrees with the county may impose additional tax to the property to better accommodate for the municipal service demand of the project, provided that the tax is reasonably necessary. For the services. So that's kind of the um idea of maybe. Uh in some of our subdivisions and developments, we're looking at uh beautification of rights of way, taking care of the leaves that are. Uh clouding up the the storm grade system. Now that we're doing a lot of things that are a lot more city-like, a lot of cities have urban forestry programs, for example. Um where somebody has to pay to take care of that stuff and I don't want the guy in the subdivision next door who has none of it to have to pay for. The guy in the subdivision who has all of it. So just finding a way to put in maybe a tax overlay or something like that to make sure that gets done. Uh fortunately for these guys, most of that's gonna be done by H O A anyway. So it probably not gonna be much of a reason for most of it. Um, okay. Review.
Maybe just real quick on that topic, though, again, talking about the the collaboration that we intend to. Break forward is at as we put together the financial picture of the community. You know, with I, our intention is to sit down with the county. And say, here's what we've learned and here's what we, here's what that would be like. Meaning if we were to convey maintenance to the county, is there a world in which we live? And we'll we'll have those discussions, but. But we also know that, you know, and how prepared to just simply agree that we handle it. And we will, but you know, there could be a discussion where I could start.
Remind me to talk to you a little bit after uh street cross-sections. Um it's not a bad thing, a good thing. I noticed something that uh. Might help you guys.
All twenty feet wide.
Yeah. Wait, yeah, no, that's on the record.
Just kidding.
Yeah.
Uh, okay. Uh, just brief on these other ones, ten point eight parcel sales. That just means that we're not gonna make them file a subdivision plat every single time that they sell a parcel. It's intended for future development. Uh technically, under state code, that's not a protected act. It does. It is technically quote unquote a subdivision, so we're just explicitly stating, okay, it's a subdivision, you don't have to file a plat. That means you don't have to put any uh escrow or financial resources towards it unless the county finds. That whatever the infrastructure is uh at its border, not within, but at its border, is reasonable and necessary to provide for the logical extension. To other properties. I don't want a developer to get in and say, not doing it uh for forty years. Well, actually, we talked about that earlier today, didn't we? I can't remember what happened two hours ago.
Yeah, right.
Uh conveyance of land, ten point ten. But the thing that I'm trying to do here, well, two things, ten point ten point one. Make sure it's the one I think it is. Yeah, uh so one of the things that their uh initial draft uh did that I I did like really well was. It set up this program where anything that's gonna be conveyed to a public entity, to the county or whatever. They'll offer it for conveyance for a certain period of time. Um give us the chance to make up our mind. Um and if we're not ready for it, goes back to them and they choose to do with it, with it what they will, as long as it still meets the. The rules of what, if it's open space, it's gotta say open space. So at that point, they turn it over an H O A or a community foundation or other entity that's similar to that. Um the only caveat to that possibly, I gotta talk to them a little bit more, is the idea that maybe we need to have some deferred. Transfer for a later period of time. They just don't wanna be stuck in this limbo period, uh obviously where we say we want it, but we don't. So, good luck.
Yeah, figured out.
Yeah.
Hold on to it.
Yeah. Um yeah, hold on to it, but get no benefit, alright. Uh now, ten point ten point two, this is just, I put some language together. I don't know if I'm in love with it. Uh I want to talk to Liam a little bit before I even show it to you guys, but. The intention of this language is, as you get further down the road um on on big projects like this, my experience is, is that. Open spaces and uh anything that we're asking for land conveyances, um they get. Set aside a lot more. Now, we have a lot of protections in here that the set asides aren't gonna happen. It's gonna be every plat, we get open space and we get those streets and all that, but in the event. Something happens, maybe master developer's real estate contract just isn't strong enough to withhold something. We get a sub-developer that goes rogue. Maybe master developer's out and we've got uh just a couple of sub-developers left over. Um we wanna make sure that if a sub-developer leaves us high and dry with a piece of open space or whatever that was supposed to be conveyed or agreed to be conveyed. That there's a way to gain occupation of that. Now, I gotta work out with Liam a little bit. We don't wanna get in a spot where we're doing with taking or anything like that. And so we just need to be cautious and. Um I put in here that it's gotta be after every other remedy has been exhausted and you still can't get it. It's hard to hold uh a development agreement over a developer's head when there's three houses left to build. Like, all right, give us. Six hundred and eighty-eight million dollars or we're gonna not let you build those three houses. Okay. Um schools, we'll figure something out there. Uh I put a little placeholder in here so you can see uh ten point one two. We've talked a little bit about a community foundation. Wanna find a way for uh them to make as much money as they can to build as many pedestrian bridges over the railroad tracks on the river as possible, you know me. Um and then use the rest of that money for whatever else. Now, you could do community reinvestment, but can't be operated by the public agency or the county. We can't. Um they can volunteer for it and we can give them a reason because they volunteered, but we can't mandatory require that under state law. Um that said, every additional thing that they apply to the property whenever a title turns over. Is one more um. Dollars and cents uh issue that someone might have and they're going to buy. So if you have, for example, I did a a point one percent. Um the real estate transfer fee essentially. Uh every time piece of property turns over, a a four hundred thousand dollar home, you're you're forming, what was that number? I think it was like five thousand dollars. So when somebody goes to close on their four hundred thousand dollar home, part of their closing cost is a five hundred or five thousand dollar uh real estate transfer fee. So. That kinda stuff, it gets a little bit touchy, especially when you're adding P I D to the top of that and bond to the top of that. So. Wanted to make the opportunity, but maybe not make a mandatory, flush that out. I didn't wanna leave it up a list, just just in case you guys felt strong about that.
I and and Charlie and I did talk about this, you know, like and and Cameron and I talked about. As well, that, you know, we're open to the idea, but as Charlie said, we're a little sensitive because we don't have the full picture of the economics of the thing. So, you know, by the time we, so we buy the dirt and then we start putting on top all the development costs and there's some P I D costs. Tax levies associated with those P I Ds or I F Ds, we get a little sensitive to agreeing to something, but we we like the concept. We've seen. Uh Cameron brought up earlier today, right? You know, Daybreak's done marvelous things with that reinvestment fee. And the H O A actually took over, you know, at a date and just started building public, you know, public uh open, embedded open spaces with that money. So we're open to it and uh we just gotta figure out the language that says. You know, do we wanna do it? Yes, but we're also trying to be careful because we just don't have that full picture yet.
I'd be nervous about putting in the development agreement, just that there's a lot of other things. I'd rather have.
And 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 to be real, if the uh H O A or the community foundation or whoever else it is, if they really wanna see all those uh bridges over the railroad, they could just increase their H O A fees and.
And usually those those reinvestment fees are self-imposed. A lot of times. Developers.
We're asking you to self-impose.
Yeah, well. You might have not even had to ask.
Yeah, right.
Because on half of our communities, we self-impose the reinvestment fee and and then we find a good use for it. Either through, I'll, you know. Boosting the funding to the H O A for open space or we, you know, that community has a special. You know, assessment that it is unique to that community that we can contribute to. There there's always some reason that that might be a good thing.
Yeah.
But.
But to unilateral it, do it might be difficult cuz you might want to specify different, different communities and just find out, find out that threshold.
Yeah. Plus, when you go to the bond market, the more you have on top of whatever that uh annual fee or the whatever it is, it just you get a little bit more risk. Uh involved in that. Okay, uh I'll strike it. Uh last thing I think I wanna talk to you guys about. At all, you just make sure I'm promising you the truth. Yep, last thing. Um the thing, hopefully nice and easy. Uh level by four point one, this is kinda one of those really important ones, like I talked about at the beginning of this, where we need the master developer to stay in control.
Yep.
You know, we do have the ability to allow them to transfer to another master developer.
If you approve it.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have language in here uh that talks about the test. Uh we can't unreasonably deny it, but here's the test. Kinda like um we've got uh our letters of credit. We do allow letters of credit as long as. Our uh financial people can find that it's coming from a bank that's reputable and that has a good uh rating. It's. Uh it hasn't defaulted or had any bad dealings, you know. So if if we find out there's some issues, we could tell someone, sorry, not that bank, find a different bank. Kind of same sort of thing, just to think about.
So this is our generic?
It was.
It was.
Yeah, now this is a lot closer to very specific.
Charlie's changed this four times today, so um he's done a lot of work on this already.
Hey, for what it's worth, this is some feedback from the developer. It's a great template.
Yep.
It it really is. It's it's a fantastic template.
So, really is. Yep.
I wanted to make sure you guys saw it, I'll maybe YouTube before you back. Any questions?
Yeah, go back to ten point eight, the parcel sales. I wanna understand that. I get that this is a transaction between master developer and another entity. So, and this is before these, this parcel would be made into developable lots.
Yes.
So it wouldn't impact any service district then until it goes to be divided down into into by into sellable lots.
Yeah, just just empty. The the intention is that there is no use assigned to that property until they've come through and gone through the full the full process. Now. If they come in and they wanna do a special event with their leaves or something like that, I don't think we're gonna stop that from happening, but technically, we will issue land use permits. Until it's been formally separated.
And and just so you understand the mechanics of that, Andrew, like when a sub-developer approaches us or we choose to go market it and we entertain offers and choose one. The due diligence process and that, that sub-developer is going to to. Familiarize themselves with the D A, the community plan, and they will come back. And there will be a lot of dialogue about the the vetting both ways, right? From the sub-developer to us and us to them. And once everybody understands that's the due diligence process, what they're required to do inside of their purchase price. Like by the time we get to the sale, it's it's potted, right? So it, there's a lot of work that goes into. That transfer or that acquisition or disposition, however you wanna look at it.
And a lot of times, this this more applies to commercial transfer, commercial sales or um. Like a church, a church property would convey this way where you wouldn't have to do a plat to convey a five acre church chapel site, right? Or some other use like that. Um and and a lot of times, like if we sold the property to a Costco or a Walmart or something like that. They would wanna do their own site plan. They wouldn't want us to do that for them cuz they've got their own criteria that they're trying to design around, so. Just simplifies that transfer property, rather than having to do a subdivision plat and then sell it to them.
And nine and a half times out of ten, the county would be involved in that due diligence process because they'll be coming to the county saying. Hey, trust the verified, right? We wanna make sure that if we do this, that it'll be approved, right? Long before the the transaction actually happens.
That's the note I just wrote in here, just to make sure I I. Uh have some with you guys. When it comes to changing this document, just with any of the other things, we want to get a master developer, only the master developer here to change it. We don't wanna be nickel and dime by every sub-developer who doesn't like what the master developer doing or what we originally arranged with the master developer. Now, that does put some implications on us because if somebody comes in and says, we got a great idea, we wanna do this thing, we've gotta go to them. They come up with a legal and being to change this, but I think that's.
And, and again, sorry, what it's worth, our contracts will not allow the sub developer. To request any type of legislative change. If they, we will not allow them to even, they may come out, but they would be in breach.
Can you, can you make it say that they don't come in at all or ask any questions? Okay, good.
Charlie, I have a follow up question from a way earlier topic. It's just been going on in my mind a little bit. When you mentioned like roads that they're gonna have to have connected, it's gonna be going through. Property. I, I totally agree as far as we don't want those landowners gouging them, making, you know. Pigeonholing, whatever you wanna call it to do that. However, I, I'm a little concerned when I hear that, um, like. I heard you say that they're gonna have to pay back too, because they're benefiting from that. I agree, they will be benefiting from it, but they're also not the ones that are asking for the change out there. So in my opinion, that benefit they're getting is because of them dealing with the new change that's happened next to their property.
Let me, let me rephrase, just to make sure we're, we're on the same page. Um, they won't have to do any payback until they develop their land.
Okay.
So, okay, thank you. They get, they get a big check.
Right.
And then they sell their land to a developer who then has to help pay for the road that's.
Okay.
And it'll trigger a pioneering agreement.
That makes more sense.
Yeah.
Payback. Yeah.
Yeah, so they pay for the road, they get the impound fees instead of the city getting.
Totally okay with that.
Although, if you want to, you can have these guys just put the road in themselves and say that's the gift to the four landowners that they're coming through.
Yeah, screw the spoils. Just kidding, kidding.
Cool.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Okay.
That would have.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you next week and.
There you go. Yeah. Yeah. I think, right? Do you have anything else, Charlie?
I have a question for you, um, and, and for you guys to get.
On record?
Not, well, I don't care. Oh, okay. It could be either way, but.
I don't care.
No. We'll get to shut it down. So, um. The question is on the organization of the agenda next week. Um, we've gotta order a certain way. Where, so we got three.